I would like to welcome everyone to the August 26, 2021 work session of the Henrico School Board. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, is their motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
The move by Mrs. Shea is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ogbrun. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The agenda is approved as presented. The first item on our agenda, we are so happy to have with us our Chief of Police and members of Henrico County Police Department here, and so we're going to receive an update on the collaboration and training between school resource officers and the Henrico Police Department discussion. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You certainly summarized that item well. So pleased to have Chief English and key members of his team with us today, pleased to have an opportunity to share with the board and our constituents our plans, our SRO plans for the upcoming year, including training efforts and so much more, and even a look back on where we've been and an idea of where we're headed as we continue this strong collaboration with our Henrico police partners. Mr. Pritchard, I'll let you kick it off.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. Before we begin our presentation, we would like to share a brief video that will help highlight our relationship with Henrico County Police.
I can think of so many positive aspects to the relationship we have with the Henrico Police Department, specifically the SRO program, and I think one of the most important aspects or benefits of that is around campus safety. There are no better experts on safety and security of our campuses than our police counterpart. And so I think the expertise that they bring as we manage campus safety is so important.
Well, the primary function of our school resource officers is to provide a safe working environment for our teachers and administrators and a safe learning environment for our students. We're our kids that know us more than just law enforcement. We try to get to know them personally. We also want them to know a lot more about us outside of just the normal duties that we have on a regular basis. So when you do see me out in the community, you know who I am, and you know that I'm just much more than just that person that wears a uniform.
You know, you might often see that they're out greeting students in the bus loop. They're in the lunchroom having conversations with students, getting to know their interests, their concerns related to the campus. So they really are working to forge relationships. I've been in schools where the SRO can call almost every student's name as they're coming down the hallway, and it's such a positive thing to see.
Good morning, morning.
So this is Rico. He's a six-year-old Dutch shepherd.
Well, a lot of times, you know, kids get excited about what they see on TV, and they get excited about the tools that we use within the division. And there are many times when we will go to the school and do a demonstration, we allow the kids to see the tools that we use. And I think it's important for them to get to know why we do some of the things that we do, just as any citizen should know about the tools that we use within our division. And so there are times when our SROs will go there, they'll let them see the lights in the car, the bomb robot, let them see what the robot does, things of that nature. A lot of students are interested in what law enforcement is all about. And so when you talk about activities outside of the norm, so you know, yesterday we had a, we did a kickball game with the kids at Johnson Elementary School. And you should just see the joy on the kids and the interaction that we had with those children. It just means so much more than what the everyday person would see in schools. And so when you talk about those type of activities, you talk about the interactions that, you know, Officer Shoal has at Hollis Springs with the lacrosse team.
Beautiful job, baby. Beautiful job.
There are just so many positive interactions that take place and can really, early on, not only set a positive culture and tone in the building, but, you know, help form early relationships about how community policing works.
We're our kids that know us more than just law enforcement. And so us learning from them, them learning from us, that's a huge partnership for us, and it goes a long way.
Good morning, sir. Good morning.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to highlight the positive relationships in our schools and communities and hope that this was evident in the video you just watched. We are pleased to have the Chief of Police with us today, which just goes to show the important relationship between the two divisions. Today, we are going to review some of the information that was highlighted in the video to include collaboration and engagement between schools and our SROs, a review of the training provided to SROs and school administration this summer in preparation for the 21-22 school year. We will also discuss key areas of focus for our SRO engagement. Here is Major Alvis, who is going to talk to you about the engagement opportunities this past year.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Although this year provided us with many obstacles, it also provided us with many opportunities to expand our engagement activities with our students. Before the school year began, we provided support at the meal distribution sites, and then once September came with the virtual start, that expanded to include support for the bus meal delivery services. SROs were onsite at meal distribution locations to greet families and assist with handing out meals, and some went so far as to support our bus drivers when supplies ran low during the bus delivery. For instance, Officer Owens, the SRO at Hermitage in ACE Center, was present at the bus stop in London Town when the bus ran out of milk. The cafeteria manager was contacted, and Officer Owens drove back to the school to pick up milk and deliver it for the students and families at the next stop. Just like our students and staff had to adjust to the virtual learning, so did our SROs. They offered virtual office hours, which provided a way to contribute and stay connected with students and staffs at the school, for them to exchange ideas and to serve as a platform for parents to communicate with the SROs. Schools' resource officers created new and updated criminal justice and first responder classes. Existing clubs converted to a virtual status for 2021 school year. The Chief Student Advisory Board, which was also virtual for this school year, the Chief Student Advisory Board provides the opportunity for high school students, two per school, to engage with the Chief of Police about various topics, to include but not limited to current events. One other example of direct interaction was SRO Danilovitch. He challenged one of his students at Brooklyn Middle School that if she brought up her grades, he would purchase ice cream for her. The student brought up her grades with the help of HPC, HPCS staff as well as him on tutoring, and she made the honor roll. With permission from the principal, the school's guardian, Danilovitch purchased Blizzard Ice Cream for the student in April. Stories like this happen daily between students and SROs. SROs engage in multiple ways. For example, SROs were guest speakers in government and AP government classes instructing on probable cause and search and seizure. SROs joined virtual career days and participated in community helper lessons virtually. Like many events this past school year, the Fraternity Order of Police Cops and Kids Program had to be modified due to COVID-19. The FOP requested SROs to help deliver gift cards to students selected for the holiday program. Cops and Kids programs would not have been successful without the collaboration between HCPS, SROs, and the FOP. An anonymous community member contacted Henrico Police asking for assistance in distributing donated and donating turkeys and fixings for nearly 30 families for a meal during Thanksgiving holiday. SROs collaborated with school officials to identify students and families for this outstanding gesture of generosity by a Henrico family. This was in addition to the H-Pow Turkey Meal Giveaway turnout and support in that great program. In this picture is also featured Officer Medina, who was engaging with students during lunch, and Officer Shoal preparing to speak with students on the bus ramp. Again, examples of daily engagement.
The most current memorandum of understanding between ACPS and HPD has been posted to the Henrico County Public School website and is reviewed annually by all parties involved. All school administrators and school resource officers will receive a copy of the most recent MOU and an overview of the updates made to ensure that there is a clear understanding of each other's role and expectations during the joint training that occurred on August Training for the upcoming school year begins with the Joint School Administrator/School Resource Officer Training. This training occurs during the Juvenile Service Officer School and includes all HCPS school principals, their administration staff, and any additional staff members principals would like to attend from their school along with the school resource officers. It is a collaboration day-long training, which is also open to all department directors and their staff. This training will include an update of the most recent changes to the MOU, review of mandated reporting and certain acts and legislation recorded disorderly conduct, enhancements to school safety protocols and procedures, and tabletop exercises that will seek participants to utilize a global perspective to provide a multi-lens approach to resolution and long-term effects of the school and community. Major Alvis will now talk about, talk you through the Juvenile Service Officer School that is developed by the Police Division and required for all police officers serving as an SRO.
As Lenny shared, the Juvenile Service Officer School was developed by the Henrico County Police Division. It started in 2015 as an annual certification required for all SROs, in addition to the required initial training provided by the Department of Criminal Justice Services. The Juvenile Service Officer School is a 40-hour, week-long class, which focuses on providing training to officers on how to best handle youth-oriented issues. On July 1, 2020, the General Assembly passed new law requiring agencies provide a minimum training for certification and reclassification of officers serving as school resource officers. Previously, this was not the case. However, Henrico has been doing this for years. Trainings include awareness of cultural diversity and implicit bias, conflict resolution to include de-escalation techniques, working with students with disabilities, mental health needs, substance abuse disorders, or post-traumatic experiences, student behavioral dynamics, including current child and adolescent development and brain research, state and federal laws, school and personal liability issues, security awareness in school environment, and disaster and emergency response. Many of the presenters of the Juvenile Services Officer School are HCPS employees, to include Dr. Monica Manz, Director for Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity, who provided training on equality and opportunity; Christina Vittek, Director of School Psychological Services, who presented on the adolescent brain and student mental health; Dr. Katie Smith, Director of Exceptional Education, presented on students with disabilities; Ms. Courtney Berry presented on school safety procedures and protocols, and a variety of staff, to include Dr. Noel, who ran us through situations on discipline. Student Support and Wellness and other members of School Safety Office were present as well in working on relationship building. We will have a heavy focus on student engagement opportunities coming this year. We are looking to expand participation in current law enforcement and public safety clubs. We've asked SROs to focus and work with counselors and administration on relationship building, and to increase opportunities for teaching and mentoring moments between police and students, including collaboration on projects for our students at the ACE Centers. We are looking to revamp the Chief Student Advisory Board to ensure students have a larger platform to determine their decisions and what they want to hear on topics of discussion focusing on areas of their concerns. Lenny and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. Our respective staffs stay in contact with each other throughout the school year, many times speaking daily on the academic year and on areas of concern. Chief English and Lieutenant Colonel Tony are here as well, and we are all available for any questions that you may have. Thank you for allowing this presentation today.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you both. I know that we have probably a lot of questions and points of clarity, so I'm going to begin with my right with Ms. Cancela.
Well, actually, you're not going to get that many questions from me. You're just going to get a big thank you, and thank you, Chief English, and thank you, Dr. Cashwell, for continuing to, for working together and revising the MOU and taking into account all of the feedback that we received, concerns from parents and students and community members. I'm real grateful for that, and just nice to see. Safety first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. I'll echo Ms. Cancela's thanks to Chief English and Dr. Cashwell for working together on many iterations of the MOU, taking into account community feedback as we work to kind of refine our partnership to be the best it can for our students and community. And so I guess my just only question is, when we post the new MOU, will there be some sort of highlight as to what the, what the changes are for this one?
I'm not sure if the website has a, I mean, I think previous histories have been shown so you could see the differences, but I don't know that it's highlighted specifically where the changes were made. We can certainly provide a summary statement, maybe annually, and recognizing, you know, while we commit to reviewing our MOU annually, it can be revised at any time as we would need to, and I think that's one of the highlights of our outstanding collaboration, is if we were to see an area we would need to adjust outside of that annual review period, we certainly would do so, and we can provide summary along with the posted document.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Ogbrun.
Absolutely. The key word I heard in what you were talking about is collaboration. You said it a number of times, and I think that is just the key to what we're doing, and the collaboration between the SROs, the departments, the staff, all the way around is the key to making all of this work and continue to work. So I'll echo what my colleagues have said. I just think the support of our kids and our staff is so important and so appreciated, and having that good relationship with a police officer is key to that going outside of school, which I think is so important. But I do appreciate the update in the training and responding to community feedback, any concerns that people have. That relationship building and collaboration is just, I think, so important. So I thank you for what you do every day to support our kids and staff, and look forward to that continuing for a good, long time, but thank you.
And not to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, and just, you know, thinking about Mrs. Shea's comment a second ago, I wanted to also kind of address where some of the larger changes were. While we'll post those, I think this would be a good opportunity to share, and I think what you've seen over time in the refinement of the MOU is really delineating the role of the school resource officer versus the school administrator, and really being clear that discipline matters or that of the school staff. And the school resource officer role is all of the things you saw highlighted here today. So I think the bulk of the changes you'll see over time in the MOU, not just from this last iteration, but prior iterations, are really working to refine that. And, you know, as was shared, that document was just shared at the annual training with the administrators and resource officers to really be clear about what that looks like and those roles and responsibilities, and making sure the language that we're using is clear not only to our building administrators, but also to our public. And I think that's what we heard a lot of in our public feedback, was really being able to fine-tune that language so that it's understandable to all of our stakeholders.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Ms. Atkins.
Thank you. Thank you again. Communication is key, along with the collaboration. I think that in discussions, particularly in thinking about your school resource officers, the administration, and what does discipline really mean, and who's the individual that determines the discipline, and, you know, what are the severity levels, and who gets to enforce the severity levels? I think a big part of that is in communication, not just with the families, but explaining to the students what these things are, what they mean, when it comes from an SRO. So I'm very appreciative of that. I also, on the, in the category of communication, I just want to share with the public where the MOU is, because as you were speaking and sharing that it was on the main page, I also want to be very clear on where on the main page, because I know we're going to have folks, since that was said, looking for it. So to be clear, once you go to HCPS main page, what you'll do is scroll to the bottom. You'll see a section that says Required Notifications, because it may not be apparent exactly where this is. So when you see Required Notifications, you'll click on that, you'll scroll down, keep scrolling, keep scrolling, and once you get to a place, you'll see, and I want to click on it so that I can make sure that I see it accurately. All right, so what you'll see, it's stated as Henrico School Law Enforcement MOU. And so that's where I have located the MOU, as Dr. Cashwell has shared. It will continuously be revised and updated, but I want to make sure, and Dr. Cashwell, please let me know if that's not the accurate place to look for it, but I do think when we're talking about contracts and memorandum of understanding and making sure that folks understand the verbiage, well, the first step is knowing where it is. And so just for those out there that have been asking, that's where you can locate it, and of course, if you have questions, there's individuals that can answer those questions for you. The other question that I do have is how often are the training sessions?
So we train annually with HCPS at that JSO school. Every single school resource officer before they can go into the schools, our requirement is that they go through DCJS training to be a school resource officer. So there is training that's done, and then there is that JSO school, and then we also have trainings, what we call briefings, where we bring people, police officers, in, and we'll train them on up-to-date issues and things like that, if there's anything that needs to be addressed.
Great. You actually answered my second question, which was going to be, we know, I knew about the annual training, but as you received feedback, are there other trainings that take place that address the feedback that you see? Because of course, there's peaks and valleys, and as we peak in certain areas, there are trainings available to address those, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other question is specifically around using tasers. Was that addressed in your training, using tasers in school?
We do. We go through de-escalation tactics, and that's part of that training. And that would be near to the last resort, which we want to do, is, you know, using tasers or anything that's less than lethal weapons in order to control a situation. So we do try and de-escalate situations prior to having to go to those resources, but unfortunately, sometimes that does occur.
I think specifically, was there any discussion around mental wellness, not only in the use of the taser, but for those that watch someone being tased? Was there any training around any potential trauma or anything like that as far as well-being? Is there discussions on that in the training?
Yes, ma'am. We talked about well-being, and that's one of the initiatives that we'd like to see SROs do. We know that there are more counselors coming into school, and like you said, collaboration and communication. My goal is to see SROs collaborating, communicating with those counselors, so that if they have a student that is undergoing any trauma, we can help address that.
Can you share with me a little bit more about that process between the SRO and the counselor?
So as it's developing, we're going to have to have those communications. SROs are available to all staff and to all school staff, and if a counselor would come to an SRO and say, we're experiencing somebody with a trauma and would like to speak to a police officer, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, so that's really on a case-by-case basis?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you so much. Those are all the questions that I have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. So just to refresh my memory, could you tell me how many SROs are at each school? First question. And what factors are considered in determining the number of SROs needed at each school?
So we have a variety of SROs. Some have two, some have one. And the schools that we have two SROs, and in determining what SROs go where, it's based on calls for service and administrative needs for that school. So in some of those, in every high school, we have one, and every middle school, we have one. In elementary schools, the middle school SROs will then cover the elementary schools, and they'll be responsible for going out there and making contact with those administrators and principals to make sure that they have contact information and can call if needed, and they'll respond. Like I said, every high school has at least one, some high schools have two, and those, with two are determined based on those calls for service and administrative needs.
Appreciate it. I think that's very important, because there's always questions in regards to why certain schools have more or less than others in regards to that, so thank you for that. On page four of the MOU, where the roles, responsibility of the school resource officer discussed, page four, I'm most interested in the SRO's role as law-related educator. With our police officers in our schools, where our primary goal is to educate students, I would like to make sure the emphasis is placed on this aspect of the SRO's role. We all know that for some of our students, there's a complicated relationship with law enforcement, or even some, some students honestly are fearful and distrustful of law enforcement. And our priority should be focused on educating our students and working towards fostering positive relationships with our youth, which I know that you all have as a tenant. For our high schools, let me ask this question. Do we have any data on classes or workshops taught to them on law enforcement topics such as understanding their rights when stopped by law enforcement, law enforcement practices, or even changes in relevant laws, et cetera?
Dr. Cooper, I don't have any data on that. I can tell you that it does happen. At most high schools, we are assisting with those classes with, you know, society and government, as well as driver education programs, where we discuss those issues and those interactions. I don't have any data on that at this time, but perhaps it's something that we could collect and get to you in the future.
I just, again, we talk about equity in regards to what are our students being taught and the efficacy of it. I mean, especially since, you know, this relationship between police and community is a relationship that's going to be fostered for the rest of their lives. I think it's phenomenally foundational if we can make sure that, you know, taking advantage of that role of the educator would be very important. On page six of the MOU, on page six of the MOU under Investigation and Questioning, paragraph D4, it mentions that the principal will make a good-faith effort to contact the student's parent prior to beginning of the interview. If the parent cannot be contacted, the principal or designee will sit in while the Police Division's member questions the student. My question for this is, if a parent is unable to be contacted, could the student designate an adult such as a case manager, or a counselor, or coach, or someone to be a third party within the building who may be a trusted person to sit on the interview as a witness? And my reasoning for that is having both authority figures of a principal and a law enforcement official may only heighten the anxiety of the student being questioned or interviewed.
That's a very good question, sir, and that's something that we'll have to address with legal counsel on as it relates to policy as well as the legislation updates, and that's perhaps something that we can look at. Yes, sir.
And I think that's an excellent question. I want to clarify that this piece of the MOU speaks to a law enforcement issue, so if a student is receiving questioning by a law enforcement issue related to something that's law enforcement, not student discipline. And so you might often see our administrators working with students to question them about a discipline matter, and absolutely counselors sitting in on that and others when a parent's not available. But as the officer said, when it comes to law enforcement rules and matters, that's certainly their purview, and, you know, I think one of the things we've tried to strengthen is making sure that we're doing our due diligence while children are in our care in our schools. If a law enforcement matter is happening in our schools and the police are involved, that we are working as school officials to make those connections with the parent or guardian. So we'll look forward to an update on, you know, how we might better facilitate that process.
I appreciate that. I know that we are very concerned about, you know, ensuring that we de-escalate anxiety as well. Last question, on page one, under paragraph 4A, page one, paragraph 4A, evaluation of the school law enforcement partnerships. It speaks of measurable objectives established by HCPS and HCPD, and the progress towards the objectives will be jointly reviewed at least annually. Can you speak to this data and advise on the objectives that were established and any made, progress made toward achieving them?
Definitely want to follow up after the meeting with some more details, but at a high level, I think I can speak to, you know, one of the data points we actually presented last year has to do with the school safety survey that goes out by the VDOE. There are some specific questions directed at staff and students on whether or not they feel safer as a result of the SRO's presence in the building. We've had high response rates in relation to that item, and so we continue to track that. That's one of the, the metrics that we're looking towards as we evaluate, and there are certainly some others, and I think, you know, sort of like annual academic progress as it's measured with the SOLs hit a bump with the pandemic. We continue to work through, you know, any other measures we can put in place, but I think that's certainly one on the school's end that we're very cognizant of and continue to watch. And I think, you know, some that will be newly established are related to the Chief Student Advisory, and I think while we can collect data from surveys and things like that, I think what the chief is hearing from our students specifically about the SRO program, anecdotally, their real experiences, their real feedback, and how we can use that to shape, I'll be interested in them. I'll be interested in themes he produces from those meetings with our students as we continue to grow and set goals for the program. We'll be looking to incorporate some goals based on the feedback he receives directly from our students.
So I appreciate that. So when, so, you know, as we progress toward achieving the goals, you know, will they be shared so persons can see the progress for transparency purposes? I mean, aligned with the MOU? Because I think too often, as we talk about academic progress, right? We say it, but where is the, the actual data that supports, you know, what we know is happening? Because I mean, anecdotally is one thing, but showing and sharing is another.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is an area where we've continued to grow in thinking about what measures we can use besides some of the quantitative. And so we're really interested in this piece with the student advisory, and I think that's certainly something we can build into, something that we could continue to report out, not only through perhaps our, our school division strategic plan under that safety and wellness section. Some of those measures, I think, relate here, but specific to the MOU, absolutely. I look forward to sharing more specifics there.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Chief, Chief English, Lieutenant Colonel Tony, it's so good to see you both. And again, appreciate the partnership and look forward to the continued evolution of the relationship to ensure that our students and staff and families know the important and integral role that you all play in keeping our students safe as well as educating our students and our communities. So thank you both. Madam Superintendent?
Yes. Want to echo the thanks again, Chief English, your entire team. I, I won't spend too long on this because I know you're in a hurry to move on to some other obligations, but just can't thank you enough. Collaboration and partnership was the key of today, the key word you heard over and over again today. And some of you might remember when I was new to the county, three years ago, in my passport reflections, I picked out some highlights that I saw as real strengths of Henrico County, and this was one of them. And, you know, I had the unfortunate situation with a plane crash followed by tornadoes during dismissal. And what I saw coming to the county was an incredibly well-oiled machine with law enforcement, fire, EM, everybody working together in a manner that just really stood out to me as proof that, you know, this partnership and collaboration is working well. We've continued to grow that in the years that I have been with Henrico County, and so just couldn't be prouder of the Henrico County partnership that we see here with this SRO program as, as we continue to grow and refine it responsive to feedback. So look forward to many great years to come of continued partnership. Thank you so much, Chief. And I think Mr. Jenks has a short commercial for us on the website.
Yes, I do, Dr. Cashwell. Mr. Chairman, if I may have a minute to follow up on what Mrs. Atkins said just a short moment ago, it is accurate that the information appears on the required notifications page of our website. Just yesterday, in preparation for this meeting, it has been placed on what we call the health and safety page of the website, which is a homepage location. And if you click on what we call the health and safety page, you'll see a section called Partnership with Henrico Police. The MOU exists at that link as well. And as we get into our typical messaging routines during the school year, there will be opportunities for us to push this out directly to our audiences as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jenks.
Thank you, Mr. Jenks. The next item on our agenda is closed session. Closed session is necessary for discussion of matters covered under item A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, and a personnel hearing for employee case number 21-22-E-1. Board members, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
They move by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we will now go in closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. The next item on our agenda is the certification of closed session. Is there a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
They move by Ms. Ogbon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the first item, I am asking that the board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of administrative personnel?
So moved.
They move by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shea, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the administrative appointment is approved.
Thank you. The board has just approved Rebecca Freelander as Associate Principal at Skipwith Elementary. For the next item, I am recommending that the school board approve the petition for licensure revocation in employee case number 21-22-E-1, and authorize me to forward the petition to the State Board of Education.
Is there a motion to approve the petition for licensure revocation and authorize the superintendent to forward the petition to the State Board of Education?
So moved.
They move by Ms. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shea, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the petition of licensure revocation is approved.
Thank you. For the next item, I am very pleased to bring you the back-to-school update. You know, the first day of school is rapidly approaching. Wednesday, September 8th, will be our first day of school, and you know we've been emphasizing that Wednesday since that's unusual compared to our traditional Tuesday start. But really incredibly proud, you're going to hear from a number of individuals who are going to highlight for you how our schools are ready to open our doors to in-person learning five days a week, full-time for our students, and do so in the safest manner possible. We are very excited about what is ahead, and I'm going to turn it over to Scott Thorpe, who's going to kick us off. You're going to hear from some building administrators and many members of our team, so take it away, Scott.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Scott Thorpe, and I am one of the directors for elementary education here in Henrico County Public Schools. Along with division leaders, we are joined today by the following school principals: Ryan Stein, Principal of Greenwood Elementary School; Robbie Moose, Principal of Hungry Creek Middle School; and Brian Fellows, Principal of Deep Run High School. Together, we will present the board with an overview of the Henrico County Public Schools' back-to-school plan for 2021, 2022. As Henrico County Public Schools prepares for the new school year, we are thrilled to welcome our students back to school and to kick off the 2122 school year. Schools have planned open house, house activities to welcome our new pre-kindergartners, kindergartners, and students who are new to HCPS. Furthermore, secondary schools have planned transition activities for sixth graders and ninth grade students, and we have also planned special activities for our seniors to kick off their last year of high school. Principals have been collaborating with their colleagues, so other schools will have similar activities tailored to their school communities. There are common threads on each level, and the Division of School Leadership is creating a calendar with all back-to-school events. Let's get it started with the principal of Greenwood Elementary School, Mr. Ryan Stein.
Bring it on. 2020 was a challenging year, and 2021 will be the most important. Therefore, now than ever, our elementary schools will put people before paper, relationships before rigor, and love before lessons. Each elementary school has developed unique ways of building a sense of belonging for all stakeholders. Our teachers are relentless in building relationships with their students and families, and how they approach best practices in the classroom. We value, support, and most importantly, see our teachers. Throughout the pandemic, the elementary principals have formed a closer bond as we collaborate and support each other now more than ever. I am proud and honored to stand side by side with the other 47 principals at the elementary level. We are committed to being transparent with our communities regarding our safety procedures and instructional practices. We will support and love our teachers no matter what is thrown at them this year. We believe in each staff member, and we thank them for making our schools an incredible experience for all students. It's also important to note that our schools feel very supported by our directors, instructional coaches, professional development, the Henrico Education Foundation, and so many other supports as we are about to close academic, behavioral, social, and emotional learning gaps. The recent expansion of school counselors and reading coaches will also make an enormous impact on the student experience. In Henrico, we are all in. Our PTAs and community partners continue to collaborate to create an extensive list of engaging programs and performances that recognize and celebrate our diversity and inclusion. We will continue to think creatively on how to offer virtual options for various events, celebrations, meetings, and office hours determined by each school. The bottom line is that our schools see no barriers, period. Our schools, communities will know by our actions that we are returning to better. At the elementary level, we believe we must exude what we hope to create, and we will assure every child and adult in our school knows they belong to our school family. Recently at Greenwood, we even created a school called Belong, featuring one of our incredible instructional assistants, Victoria Fitzgerald, to bring this point alive. This year is our year, and we are ready at the elementary level. At this time, I pass the mic over to the innovative principal at Hungry Creek Middle School, Mr. Robbie Moose.
Thank you, Ryan. Good afternoon. On behalf of the HCPS Middle School team, I want to thank you for the opportunity to showcase how many middle schools are implementing similar plans and activities to prepare students for success in the 2122 school year. This year, we have hosted a sixth-grade Cougar Camp for all rising sixth graders, and a seventh and eighth-grade Cougar Camp for any students that are new to the creek or would like to be re-acclimated back to the creek. We were able to highlight our creative and innovative approaches to instruction and reduce the level of anxieties our students may have. We introduced staff, included videos in the day of the life of a student, highlighted our maker hub, and showcased instructional activities and projects associated with these digital tools. We highlighted extracurricular activities such as clubs and sports, our safety plan, heard from school counselors, and introduced our PBIS framework. Students were also able to take part in a scavenger hunt utilizing digital tools to learn the layout of our building. Next, we'll be hosting an open house. This will be an open-flow concept with stations in our bus loop, commons, auditorium, and gym. We have stations to provide information regarding individual student schedules, in which they will be able to walk throughout the event, transportation information, meet the PTA, digital learning assistance for parents, and informations about athletics. For our back-to-school night, we are planning on offering this event in a parallel hybrid format to ensure the opportunity presents itself for all stakeholders to participate in this evening. This event will include our goals and expectation, walk the students' schedules virtually or in person, and hear from each teacher. Again, I want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share this information with you today. At this time, I now turn it over to Dr. Brian Fellows, Principal, Deep Run High School.
Thank you, Mr. Moose. Good afternoon. We are excited and looking forward to welcoming our high school students back in a few weeks. The high school principals, teachers, and staff members have been working nonstop this summer, preparing for the start of the 2122 school year. As part of the welcome-back plans, all of the high schools will be having orientation programs and open houses, similar to what Robbie and Ryan explained a few moments ago. The idea is to get students back into the building with the purpose of starting to establish, and in many cases, re-establish, relationships with our students and communities. The visual on the screen is specific to the Wildcat Experience at Deep Run High School, which is an orientation program for all transfer students, ninth grade and 10th grade students. All of the high schools feel it's important to include our 10th grade students in these programs, as they have not been in our buildings for quite some time, if ever. These programs at the high school will be the start of the very best school year ever and the best, and the start of a set of experiences which our students will remember forever. The visual on the screen now offers a sampling of first-quarter activities at several of the high schools. As we return to school, it is important for us to be stronger and better than normal. Virtual community forums have taken place this month and over the summer at some schools to ensure all stakeholders have appropriate information and preparation for the school year. Administrative teams have used these forums to set direction and provide clarity on specifics to the community. Seniors also had an opportunity this summer to have individual pictures by appointment following all CDC guidelines earlier this summer. Strawberry Studios provided drapes and tux, tuxes for students to use as formal yearbook pictures. To ensure all HCPS seniors have equitable yearbook photo experiences, Strawberry will be back in the fall to take additional photos through English classes for those students who are not able to make it this summer. Before school starts, we will welcome, as I said earlier, the Class of 2025 onto campus for the first time and provide orientation to 10th grade students and students new to the area. This is a major event where we will build momentum for the start of the school year. As students return to school on September 8th, as we've noted, is on a Wednesday, we will hold class meetings to review learning expectations, graduation requirements, avenues for student voice, and to discuss ways to engage in the high school experience. Back-to-school night will be held in September in a setting which will either be in-person and/or virtual, depending upon the school, where we will invite parents to learn the mission and vision of the school, goals for the school year, join the PTA or PTSO, and follow their student schedules, and most importantly, meet their students' teachers. Finally, convocation will occur at some point in October to officially declare the Class of 2022 seniors and present them to the school community. It continues to be our goal to ensure all students have the best high school experience under whatever circumstances occur over the next 10 months. And finally, since Deep Run is hosting our first football game of the season tonight, it's appropriate for me to say, "Go Wildcats." Thank you, and now Scott Thorpe will come to the podium again.
Thank you, Dr. Fellows. Now we'd like to provide an overview of what the learning day will look like for our students. At the elementary level, we are looking forward to a return to a full-day, five-days-a-week schedule with students. Every morning, elementary students will start with morning meeting, where they will engage in social, emotional experiences designed to build connection and community. Students will engage in 140 minutes of reading and language arts per day at the kindergarten through grade three level, and 120 minutes for grades four and five every day. Mathematics will run approximately 60 minutes per day, with social studies science running with a 200-minute-a-week block of time, about 40 minutes daily, to enable cross-curricular connections with reading. And now, Dr. Dia Champ, Director of Middle School Education, will share about the daily schedules at the middle and high school levels.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Thorpe? Now let us take a look at example middle and high school schedules. Here you see two example middle school schedules. Students attend four class periods a day on an alternating day schedule. On day one, students attend class periods one, two, three, and four, and on day two, students attend periods five, six, seven, and eight. Building administrators are responsible for constructing a master schedule that meets the needs of their students. Individual teachers will maintain consistent amounts of time in each content area when instructional delivery will differ by class. Students will resume travel throughout the building for targeted instruction. Classes would run for 80 to 85 minutes to include a 25 to 30-minute advisory block and four-to-five-minute staggered transitions between each class period and lunch. The advisory block would consist of social and emotional learning lessons, intervention, digital citizenship, and enrichment opportunities. Lunches are scheduled during second block or third block for 20 to 30 minutes. Students and staff will follow best practices and mitigation strategies while utilizing these instructional resources. Schools are in the process of updating their safety plans for the upcoming school year and will post on their school's websites. As you can see, high school schedules may vary according to the number of class periods and integration of advisory and directed study time. Students will resume travel throughout the building for targeted instruction with staggered transitions between each class period and lunch. The slideshow shows a sample eight-period schedule, seven-period schedule, and an A schedule. For the eight-period schedule, students attend periods one, three, five, and seven on day one, and periods two, four, six, and eight on day two. For the seven-period schedule, first period repeats each day, and students attend periods three, five, and seven on day one, and periods two, four, and six on day two. As you will notice, regardless of the seven-period or eight-period schedule, time is allotted for directed study, social-emotional learning to meet all student needs. A-Center students will spend period one at their home school every day. On their designated A-Center day, which is day one or day two, they will be transported from their home school after first period to their respective from their home school after first period to their respective A-Center. They will then be transported back to their home school before the end of the day so that they have the ability to ride their regular bus home. We are ready to welcome our pioneer group of students and staff to the Henrico Virtual Academy. In a virtual format, HVA will follow a similar schedule as our elementary schools, and our secondary students will follow the middle school's schedule to allow for combined classes and early release for our high school students. To prepare for our inaugural year, Mr. Marshall began sending weekly messages to families in July. He also introduced staff via Twitter Weekly. The PTSA was formed, and events were held with families, students, and teachers. On the first day of school, HVA will launch with a video to include messages from staff. Students will start their day in their virtual community class to receive guidance on how to navigate throughout the day. Students will also have a virtual community team building activity and take a class photo. As we return to school this fall, we will continue to prioritize students' socio-emotional and mental health needs by focusing on rebuilding our community while also providing extra time devoted to re-establishing routines, procedures, and behavioral expectations. Beyond access to a comprehensive school counseling curriculum, all students pre-K through grade 12 will also be provided with weekly SEL lessons delivered by the classroom teacher utilizing curriculums and lessons aligned with collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning core competencies, also referred to as CASL. It is important to note the Virginia Department of Education released new SEL guidance standards in July 2021. A committee will convene throughout the 21-22 school year to review these standards and seek alignment with content standards and current SEL curriculums before making a recommendation for adoption of some or all of the proposed standards in the spring of 2022. Additionally, we are excited to share that we will be providing research-based panorama socio-emotional learning surveys to students and a separate survey to teachers and staff beginning this fall. The Panorama SEL survey for students is aligned with CASL's core competencies and will allow us to gather feedback and data related to student well-being and socio-emotional learning as well as identify students who may need additional, more targeted SEL support such as small group or individual counseling. Students needing more intensive socio-emotional learning and mental health support have access to school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers who collectively make up the school-based mental health team. Our current model of school-based mental health clearly identifies the individuals assigned to each building that are uniquely qualified to provide these services in a way that is appropriate to the learning environment. HCPS school-based mental health providers are uniquely qualified to provide mental and behavioral health prevention services, early identification, and intervention, as well as crisis referral, follow-up services to students and their families as needed during the transition back to school this fall. Families seeking assistance or with additional questions should reach out to their school counselor. Now, Adrienne Cole Johnson, Director of Family and Community Engagement, will share plans for kicking off the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Champ. In preparation for the upcoming school year, we know that authentic and genuine engagement will be critical to ensuring we stay connected to all students and families. Our mission continues, and that is to highlight a build, bridge, and boost model as we kick off the school year. Building relationships and staying connected to resources, bridging high-impact partnerships and collaborations, and boosting transformative family engagement district-wide and in our school communities. As we heard earlier, our schools are truly taking the lead in engaging with families where they are, leading with the creative and innovative approach where there is a commitment to reach all families no matter what it takes. Our family advocates are well-positioned in many of our schools to be proactive regarding the family engagement efforts and outreach of schools, and where there is no family advocate present, school leadership is certain to designate the proper staff person and/or team to manage the efforts. Frequently, the FACE Department is consulting with schools on ideas and approaches to garner and maintaining partnerships, effective family engagement practices, and how to increase parental involvement. With regards to our community engagement efforts, FACE will continue to provide support through the Family and Educated Resource Center where our Bridge Builders Academy and Mobile Resource Center efforts live. Bridge Builders is preparing to launch a robust schedule for the fall and winter that will include a combination of in-person and virtual offerings. Our hope is to meet families where they are and to touch as many people as possible. As pictured on the slide, this summer allowed us to see and experience our students and families through community-based outreach and engagement. We will continue these efforts throughout the school year as well. Attendance requests at various school functions are increasing, as well as our participation at various events throughout Henrico County. Staying connected to our communities has been a huge support with regards to the listening and connection that is required. And now, you will hear from my colleague, Mike DeSault, as he provides instructional updates.
As a reminder, the board received a variety of updates over the past few months with regards to our instructional focus for the upcoming year. Destination 2025 goals, the Division's Life-Ready Literacy Plan, and the HCPS Teaching and Learning Framework remain the heart of our instructional focus. Aligned professional learning will be key throughout the duration of the school year to provide job-embedded application of our content-specific resources. Our pre-K through 12 curriculum cycle will continue to evolve through the lens of equity. This review and update process takes place yearly to ensure an aligned curriculum that meets the needs of all learners. At the elementary level, intervention services, resources, and progress monitoring will be reimagined this fall. Core instructional tools and professional development have been identified to support classroom teachers to match student intervention needs throughout the year. Classroom teachers will, in most cases, be delivering intervention support to students with a reading facilitator pushing in to select classrooms for additional targeted support during small-group instruction. Secondary students will be provided direct intervention instruction using Lexia Core as a digital supplement. The utilization of a data warehouse will ensure student growth is monitored throughout the year, and adjustments in instructional practices are made accordingly. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Ellis, who will provide an update on transportation.
Good afternoon. These are the following mitigation strategies pertaining to school bus transportation. Daily screening will continue for staff prior to returning to work. Masks continue to be mandatory for all staff and students physically able. Drivers will have extra masks on hand. Seating charts will continue to be maintained. The AM lists will be delivered upon arrival, and the PM list returned prior to departure. Hand sanitizer will be available on all buses, and buses will be sanitized using our electrostatic sprayers after all AM runs are completed and at the end of the day. Bus stop information will also be available in Power School August 31st. And next up is CFO John Wack with Child Nutrition Information.
Thank you, Jim. In terms of school nutrition services, all students will qualify for free meals during the school year due to the waiver extension from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Neither free reduced meal applications nor student ID numbers will be required for free meals during the school year. And for our in-person students, all grade levels will be making selections from the serving lines at breakfast and lunch. Students will need to have funds in their My School Box account in order to purchase all cart items, and the meal service times are being established at the school level. For our Virtual Academy students, those families may pick up a week's worth of meals curbside on Mondays between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. at the student's closest middle school, with the exception of the first week of school where meals will be distributed on Wednesday, September 8th. Turn it back over to Scott.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about lunch at the elementary and secondary level, and all schools are unique. Therefore, many schools have come up with different approaches to assist with social distancing and to help with mitigation strategies. Schools are exploring creative approaches and solutions during lunch by finding ways to spread out students during this period of time. Schools are incorporating assigned seating in the cafeteria and designating areas in the school classroom. For example, some schools are utilizing alternative spaces throughout the building such as the auditorium, gymnasium, stage, library, hallway, and classrooms that are available, even in some cases, outdoors. All available staff are monitoring students during lunch. Another creative idea is the elimination of the bell schedule for lunch. This means lunchtimes are staggered throughout the lunch block, and this allows students to sit every other stool or seat rather than side-by-side. Most importantly, schools will utilize mitigation strategies to ensure the safety of students and teachers. And speaking of mitigation strategies, much of the same mitigation strategies seen in our schools last year will continue to be in place for the upcoming school year. These will include: social distancing in our classrooms and other learning areas of three feet to the greatest extent possible. Schools will be required to maintain seating charts and rosters of areas for contact tracing. Schools will be required, excuse me, students and staff will continue to wear face coverings while in the school building. This mask recommendation presented to the school board during the August 12th presentation will be followed, which allows opportunities for mask breaks when students and staff are outside the building. Student cohort groups will be utilized and continue where possible. Daily screenings before reporting to work or school will continue to be required by staff and students. The updated screening forum has been shared with families through RICOR, and the updated screening forum for staff has been communicated by our Human Resources Department. Frequent cleaning of high-touch surfaces will continue throughout the day. Although Plexiglas shields will not require to be used, each classroom or learning area will have Plexiglas shields available for students to use as needed or requested. We will also continue to monitor the amount of traffic permitted in the buildings by volunteers and/or visitors by reviewing community transmission rates and following the tiered system approach as outlined by our Health Committee. As you can see, we and our school teams are approaching this school year with enthusiasm and purpose. At this time, we can entertain any questions that you may have.
Well, we just, can we give them a hand for that presentation real quick? We know that this, along with our Health Committee report, is so integral to our next steps as far as reentry to our building, so we are excited to begin this round of questioning. I'm gonna start my left with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the presentation and for all of the hard work that will certainly continue beyond September 8th. I'll start with just a few recommendations that I've received. You know, they came in the form of ideas, but I think this is a perfect opportunity just to share so that staff may explore them to see if they are feasible. One of the recommendations is really in the form of a process document for principals there, support staff and families around how do you request Plexiglas if you so desire for your child? And if you're in high school, of course, you're going to different classrooms. So I think just providing the process for Plexiglas, if you have the answer to that, that would be great, or I can flow through the different things that we might want to put on a process document. It's up to you.
Thank you.
So you want me to continue to flow through what could be on the process document, or did you have an answer for the Plexiglas?
Oh, I wanted to thank you for the recommendation and for the idea. Thank you.
Okay. The other topic to put on a process document for principals to share with families is around the mobility between classes. What is that process like? So if you're in high school and you leave your classroom and you're walking between classes, or oftentimes, sometimes the hallways get a bit crowded. What guidance do you have for families to help their children in getting back and forth between classrooms? I think as a parent, one of the things that I can do at home is make sure, now that I no longer have a high school student, but if I did, I would say make sure that you, when you leave class, you go straight to class. I know that's been said by many parents, but we also know high school students. So perhaps on a guidance document or process document, it could be shared how we're using and enforcing mitigation strategies in the classroom. If we're gonna have maybe some assigned staff in the hallways to help get students along and so forth, so that would be something else on a process or guidance document. And then the other idea is around requesting makeup work. How do you, you know, how do you want parents to request makeup work? In some cases, some parents have shared they used to send a letter, but given where we are, do you prefer to send emails? Things like that are some of the ideas that were shared with me to put on some sort of guidance document to share with principals, to share with families, or just to give to families directly. The other thought was, you know, thinking about how staff support students, but they support their families as well, and one thing to consider that probably will need funding is around a wellness space within our schools, a dedicated wellness space, whether it's a corner and we put a massage chair in it, or whether it's a mini gym. I know Elko has something similar to that, but really thinking about dedicated wellness spaces for staff where they can, almost like a stress-free zone for them. So something to consider as we move forward in the school year. And now I'll move forward to the questions. I believe in the presentation for Henrico Virtual Academy, it stated that lunch will be available, and thank you so much, Mr. Thorpe, that lunch will be available for pickup between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. And the question is for our middle and high school students that would usually leave to pick up their lunch during their lunchtimes, is there any flexibility to be able, for students to be able to pick up their lunches during lunchtime versus between that 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. timeframe? If that's accurate.
So the intention is for a full week's worth of meal to be picked up one day per week for all Virtual Academy students?
So, let me just back up. So when does school start for HVA?
So the first weekly pickup would be on Wednesday, September 8th, and then?
Right, but the school day for Henrico Virtual Academy, when does the school day begin?
It's at 8:30 because they follow the middle school schedule for the secondary students, and 8:10 for the elementary students.
So that means for students that are in class would need to leave class to pick up their lunches if lunches are delivered between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. So the question is, is there any flexibility for the schedule to be shifted a bit so that students don't have to leave their class to pick up their week-long worth of meals? If lunch is delivered between their lunchtime, they don't have to leave class, because some students will walk to pick up their meals, middle and high school students. And so I just want to make sure we understand that some students are going to leave class to pick up their meals if that's the only option. Is that accurate?
If I might chime in, I think I understand what you're saying. So that's a designated pickup time that, you know, we would imagine many, in many instances, a guardian, a parent, someone's coming to collect them during that time for the week, but certainly at the pickup hub that a student may wish to use. If they are the ones who will be picking it up and another time is more convenient, they can certainly work with that school. So it's at the middle schools. So a student would determine which middle school is closest to him or her where they're going to be picking up their lunch every day or that one time a week, and just let them know if they need an alternate time, and I feel certain the cafeteria team could be prepared for that.
Okay, so the process would be for the parent to contact the school and let the school know that they need to pick up the lunch at a different time. Is that correct?
Correct. Ideally, where they'd plan to pick up the lunch, because they have the option of going to, you know, it may be that you're participating in virtual learning from somewhere other than your home or area, so whatever the nearest hub is where you're gonna be picking up your lunch, whichever middle school, to let them know, and they can make arrangements.
Okay, wonderful, because that is some of the feedback from high school students who thought they'd be able to, on their lunch break, pick their lunch up and learn that it's only- it's only available at 9:00, and they are prepared to leave class to pick their lunch up, and we wouldn't want that. So I appreciate sharing that there is flexibility with picking up lunch, so thank you.
Yeah, they're prepackaged and in bulk for the week, so they could be held and distributed to the student when they arrive during school hours.
The other question is around the survey that will be distributed to better understand social, emotional well-being and learning. Can you share with me the timeframe on when that will be distributed and how that would
Sorry, I was coming all the way from the back.
Take your time.
But I am happy to answer that question. I'm Christina of ITAC, one of the directors of student support and wellness, and we are currently in the very early stages working with the Panorama implementation team in our project plan to get this rolled out for the year. So we are currently looking at administering this survey to our teachers and our students about four to six weeks into the school year. That is their recommendation to allow the teachers who will be completing the surveys for our younger students to really get to know them, and to allow our students to become more comfortable in this setting. The surveys take about 15 minutes for students to do, and they'll be done during the school day, likely utilizing our advisory time or morning meeting time. We are currently working on identifying the areas that we're gonna be measuring and picking the questions, so that process has just begun, and we'll be working closely with that Panorama team. Our plan is to administer the surveys three times during the course of the year. So in the fall, the winter, and then again in the spring.
Wonderful, thank you. And then my next question is around trauma-responsive activities. I was curious to learn what type of, and I should have, I should have said just stay at the mic. I looked at my laptop, but I wasn't paying attention to you walking back, so I apologize for not letting you know. But I'm curious to learn more about, you know, what trauma-informed activities we have, not on a grander scale, because I know you have a plan. I know that, so you don't have to get into details with that. But I'm really looking at some of what I think is low-hanging fruit, like things on the walls in the building, you know, beyond our traditional welcome-back, perhaps signage that says, "We're so glad you're here," signs like, "We're gonna learn together," which really speaks in a very subtle way to trauma. So can you share with me just some of the more low-hanging fruit of ways in the building and activities that will be explored in that topic?
Sure. One of the things that we have introduced to all of our staff, really led by our school-based mental health professionals, is the need to spend that initial welcome-back time focusing on building relationships, ensuring that our students feel connected to the adults in the building, that the school is a safe, welcoming, supportive environment. So being very aware of the messaging that is around, being very present in the hallways, greeting our students by name, getting to know them, working with them on re-establishing, you know, expectations for school and just what it means when we're together and that this is a safe place and we're all here to support one another. We have offered or built into our social-emotional learning scope and sequence a whole unit on community rebuilding, so that our teachers can purposefully engage in those trauma-informed behaviors and conversations with students to help everyone feel safe, secure, and connected. I do think that our, many of our schools next week have a lot of activities planned to work with teachers, to help them become aware of some of the strategies, some of the mannerisms, the questions, so that they can really approach all students with a trauma lens. We're working in partnership with Scan next week in some of our schools to do the brain architecture game with the teachers, again, to just really reinforce what we know needs to happen in our interactions.
And with some of that training and activities that take place, that's also inclusive of Henrico Virtual Academy as well, the staff?
Absolutely. We would be very, very welcome to provide those activities and work with Henrico Virtual Academy, absolutely.
Thank you. Want to stay right there?
I was gonna say I might stay right there.
Okay, actually, this is the last question, and this is around technology, for whomever will be prepared to answer that. A question around how are we expanding technology desires and needs for our staff and for our students? One of the things that have definitely began to surface, particularly with Henrico Virtual Academy, is typing. And for our students, middle and high, that may not be familiar with typing and ASDF, JKL, semicolon, and typing a paper, it takes them, you know, a much longer time. So I'm really thinking about technology and spaces around, or opportunities, where we can help our students learn our technology better in the form of typing, or in the form of understanding even how to use it. Can someone share what we've done in that space?
I'm gonna chime in here. So I think there are probably a number of things individual teachers do that I probably couldn't even capture, because they're really good at monitoring student success and seeing, like, perhaps there's a writing assignment and they notice there's slow delivery of a product by a student. Is it due to a thought block or something related to typing? So there's certainly a lot of things teachers can do to help students be successful with the device. You may be aware, for example, that through our laptop refresh, we have new devices coming to high schoolers that may be unfamiliar to the devices they had before that they last used and turned in. So one of the things I'm really impressed by are ILCs do a lot of creative work, both with the teachers and students, like tutorials and how-to videos. They're a great resource for helping students and staff learn how to use a lot of the new technologies that are introduced, and that's probably not just the device, but a lot of the programs that we use, that students are exploring for the first time, apps, those sorts of things. So that's one of the dedicated, our ILCs are able to really focus on time and attention and be responsive by grade level to that.
Thank you for that, and that is my last question. But I would like to see a plan that includes how we will continue to help our students with expanding upon their technological capabilities, and then helping them understand how to use the laptops and ways that help them grow. So if I could just get something like that, that would be great. And then also, can I get just a summary of the trainings that's been, you know, made available to staff to better understand technology as well?
Sure, we're happy to provide you some information.
So thank you so much for your patience with the questions. Appreciate it.
Before we go on, Ms. Atkins, I actually wanted to respond to your first question. And so all of our elementary and secondary schools are preparing a back-to-school plan to give to families, and at the elementary level, it operationalizes things like arrival, dismissal, classroom procedures, what things are like in the hallway, lunchtime, recess, expectations for masking, and I think that spoke to some of which you questioned about in that first item. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because as I talk to families, one of the things that definitely is consistent in the conversation is, what's the process to do this, and what's the process to do that? And going into four or five different places to figure out what that is, and it would be nice, whether it's given to principals to share in a principal's listening session, or even on our website, but just a place where families know the process, they know they can, but they may not know the how. And I think that would be something that families would appreciate having. So thank you for that, Mr. Thorp. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, really appreciate you. Ms. Augbrun?
Thank you. Mr. Thorp, Dema, you went around the corner you're hiding. But I just, if you could expand on what you were just talking about, because I think that is so important. I mean, the enthusiasm of the group is just so infectious, and where I think we're all getting kind of, you know, excited for the coming days, but if you could tell us a little bit more about the communication you're talking about, because to me, this is a crucial bit of information.
Sure. Ms. Augbrun, you probably can't see the smile behind my mask, but I know that we've been working very closely with our principals and their school admin teams on their final edits on these plans, and keeping it a fluid document as information comes in from, for instance, the health committee. But again, earlier in the presentation, I had said that all schools are unique, and so too are these back-to-school and response plans. And, you know, student arrivals, they look, they look very differently. Some people's bus ramps are very narrow, others are much longer. But talking more about what recess will look like, and, you know, what the pods will look like, and the social distancing with the masks off, and how we're going to maintain in cohorts and what those look like. And again, while there are a lot of similarities within these plans, there are also some details within the plans that are the unique nature of each of the schools. And so, again, our schools are making the final edits to that, and will make edits throughout the year, because it's a fluid document, and our plan is to share them with families as soon as possible, and perhaps even, even next week.
And I appreciate that so much. As you can imagine, we've been getting a little bit of email lately, and a few phone calls. And one of the, one of the things we hear about the most is, what's the plan? How's it gonna work, et cetera, et cetera? And I know everybody is anxious to get those answers. So knowing that it's coming, I think this is major for us to be able to tell our parents this information is coming for your school, because it is so different. Each building is different, the process is different. And so it's difficult for us to say, well, this is the plan, because we can't. And people don't understand that. We have so many buildings that are all different, and, you know, you have to work with your students and your staff and meet their needs. And so I think it's so important that it's being done that way, so I'm really appreciative of that. So, Mr. DeSault, if I can get you to, I'm gonna put you on the spot for just a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Grant, did you have?
Just remember, we also had plans this summer during summer school. So a lot of the things that we putting in place at the beginning of the school year, they were very successful for us this past summer.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Grant, for adding that. I think for our families who came back in the spring or participated in our summer academy, they have a pretty good idea of what it looks like, but we recognize many are coming back for the first time this fall. So, you know, while we're feeling good about a lot of the strategies we refined in the spring and the summer, you know, we'll keep working to articulate those to our families through those individual school plans.
Well, and to your point, we're feeling good, the staff is feeling good, we've got to get the parents there too, and the students. And that's, that's the real challenge right now, is to make everybody feel comfortable with what we're, what we've got planned. And I think understanding is the key to that, understanding the details. But, Mike, I'm just gonna ask you, you talked about intervention, obviously my wheelhouse, so I wanted to get some information from you. And I get a lot of questions about this. There are some parents that have contacted me, learning loss and concerns for possible learning loss, because we don't know, is a big topic, and it's one that, you know, folks are really interested in. But you had in there the interventionist, the plan is this year, they're gonna be coming, pushing in to the classroom as another set of hands, essentially. Is that gonna be universal across the county, or is that, again, gonna be one of those? It may look different in each building.
That's a great question, and our goal was to provide the maximum flexibility to the building principal to be able to meet the needs of their students. So depending on the staff that you may have in the building, whether you have title staff, whether you've got a wide variety of what we're calling reading facilitators, now that we're previously known as the interventionists, that flexibility is up to the building leaders there and the individual grade levels. But we have highly encouraged that the classroom teacher take that active role in there, as they know the students the best, and they're able to follow through throughout the day. And then probably the most important part that we are looking at is the ability to connect to the parents, because in previous years, an interventionist typically did not have the opportunity to connect with a parent or a guardian, to give them updates on how they're doing with intervention. So our recommendation has been from teaching, learning, and innovation is to go ahead, and if the classroom teacher is able to deliver that intervention, that would be the best-case scenario.
That's awesome. So how are we gonna do progress monitoring? I mean, I understand we're not doing maps this year. I assume we're doing PALS, and...
So another great question, and a principal memo kind of went out on that earlier this week to kind of guide our principals to be ready for some of those assessments that we'll be doing. So we do have the through-year assessment that'll be coming through the state, which will give us an entry point in terms of where they are on the grade level material. Of course, we will be doing the PALS. And an added benefit of our intervention program this year are entry points for assessments. Some will be doing a Fanta's and Penel if their reading level is high enough, others will be doing what's called an IDI inventory, which will be a little bit below what an FNP would be, so that we know what part does a student need to come in for intervention, as opposed to everybody needs to do comprehension. Well, not everybody may need to do comprehension, they still need to work on their phonics or phonemic awareness. So our entry points are going to guide our teachers. And now to your second point there, how are we gonna track this? In performance matters, we have the ability now to take these assessments and put them in and be able to disaggregate them. So we'll be able to look at schools by subgroup, by gender, all the way across the board, and we'll be able to set progress monitoring probes, so we can see if we are meeting our target, and if not, then we need to change our instruction. And to address parents out there who know that they feel like their child may have some learning loss, it's when our target is not being reached that we need to take a look at either what we're doing instructionally, or is there something else going on? But we're gonna need a little bit of time to get some of that baseline information and give our Tier 1 and Tier 2 strategies some, some time to develop before we're able to make those decisions.
Well, and two, it's always the goal to have your testing and assessment drive your instruction.
Correct.
And if that's the focus, that's obviously the best way to reach the kids who need any help with learning loss or to fill those gaps. So I'm really glad to hear that. And I'm also really gratified to hear that learning loss is right up there with the things we're looking at, because that is a concern that parents have, have mentioned a number of times, and we want to be sure that they know that we're doing that. I just have one other little thing, and it, Mr. Thorp, is, did he leave? Or is he hiding? Oh, you're hiding again, sorry.
I was demonstrating social distancing, Ms. Augbrun.
You had information about lunch and mitigation, and this, probably when you read our public comments that have been submitted online, and the emails that we get, lunch is, it's a, it's a big concern for a lot of people. So I'm really glad to see that on the list are a number of the things that have been suggested to us, with outdoor lunches possible, and again, this is gonna be something different for every building. I even saw the details of like every other lunch stool, because I mean, I can't tell you the number of emails, like, don't y'all realize that the little stools that are at the cafeteria tables are real close together? And so yes, the answer is we do, and we're gonna take that into account. But to use alternate spaces, but again, this is information that will be shared by each school as to how lunch will be handled, correct?
That's right, and I do want to reiterate that, again, going back to the point of all schools are different.
Right.
Okay, different, different campus sizes, different campus layouts, different facilities, different student enrollments, different staffing allocations. So those are some of the factors that our principals and admin teams are, are looking at. Those are the contextual factors that they're using to try to find some alternative approaches. They're, they're working toward that, so, so yes.
So we can tell parents, rest assured, this is on the radar, because a number of parents have said, what are you doing about lunch? I'm worried about lunch. And I get that completely, but know that this is something we are addressing and something we do have mitigation and we do have plans to handle. But again, I don't think we can say it often enough, that it might look different from one school to another, based on the facility and all of that. But thank you for all that. You guys have worked so hard on making the plan so inclusive, it's innovative, it is meeting the needs of kids. It's so important to provide in-person, outdoor, virtual, hybrid, every option that we have. It's kind of like all the tools in the tool belt are being utilized, and that's so important right now. And I think we just need to assure families that that's what's going on. We are using everything we can to make sure their kids are as safe as possible, and that's the goal. And I think this speaks volumes to that. So thank you for all the work, I appreciate it. I'm done, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you so much, Ms. Augbrun. Ms. Shea?
Thank you so much. I just want to start by thanking our principals, Mr. Stein, Mr. Moose, and Dr. Fellows for being here. This was a significant investment of your time to be here most of today in order to present to us on a week where every moment is critical to get ready for staff coming back. to get ready for staff coming back to next week and all the things. And so we are honored that you would invest that time to share with us today. So I wanted to make sure to thank you for that. Dr. Cashwell, I'm just gonna jump into some of the main concerns that I have heard from my constituents. And one of them has been a concern over kinda what we've heard continuously throughout this presentation, that each building has its own flexibility. And so is there a reason that for some of these things like lunch and dismissals and those sorts of things, that there's not a central homogenous solution? Is it a lack of planning on the central office's part? Or is this an intentional strategy?
Yeah, it's absolutely intentional. And I think Mr. Thorpe articulated well some of the reasons why. And so there are certain pieces of the health mitigation that are constant and the same. And you've heard our health committee outline those over and over again. We continue to, you know, masks are required inside of our school buildings. We're using three feet to the greatest extent possible. You know that in every building, we're working to make sure HVAC systems are well maintained. We worked system wide when we reopened in the fall to increase our filters to the highest level possible. And where we weren't able to do that, adding individual units to classrooms and other spaces. We've actually worked this year to, we're adding individual filter units into the cafeterias because those spaces largely weren't used last year. So from a systems perspective, the things that are common threads, the the bus procedures for cleaning between bus routes with our electrostatic sprayers, the high touch frequency cleaning in our buildings, provision of additional masks, wipes, sanitizer, all the supplies to our schools, those things are common in our central approach, asking that all schools maintain seating charts, that our buses have seating charts, that we're aware of where students are sitting in proximity to others. So there are certainly common threads, but the parts that are different, as you alluded to, Mrs. Shea, have to do with the unique constructs of the building. So hallway traffic patterns will differ whether you're in elementary school or a high school, bus procedures. But all of the procedures that our schools are developing are their attempts to create the best scenarios possible for health and safety. And so, but those core mitigation strategies remain, whether you walk into one building or another, no matter the level, the volunteer and visitor procedures that, you know, we set those thresholds at the division level. And then, you know, you recognize that there's a building level decision involved after that. So we really are setting the stage with the core mitigation, following CDC, looking at our health committee guidelines. But the nuances of that really are up to the school. And we're certainly guiding them as they need assistance centrally. If they have questions, those can go through the health committee. But those health and safety plans for each and every school that they're developing and will post on their sites and work with their staff to understand and their families and their students will have nuances that are unique.
Thank you. And I, you know, as, as listening to your response there, I think also what really jumped out at me is when our elementary school principal, Mr. Stein, made the explicit point that the principals feel supported right now. And there's a lot on their plate, but they feel supported by your team as they develop these plans. So thank you. I know Ms. Ogborne talked a little bit about lunch, but that is truly 90% of the many, many emails I get. So if we could just dive into that a little bit more, do we mind going to the lunch slide and just digging into this just, just a little bit, particularly for the elementary? All right. So seating charts will be maintained. Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is those seating charts will look very similar to the students that they're sat with in the classroom. So that the students that they're sitting with at lunch will be the same students that they're already sitting with in class and lamps in other areas, correct?
That's correct. That's, those are cohorts.
Cohorts are podding when you hear those terms. Yep.
Right.
Okay. And then when we talked a little bit about how each school is unique, you mentioned just, let's, can we articulate again, some of the options that some of our schools are utilizing beyond just the cafeteria? So I jotted down using perhaps auditoriums, gyms, having some classes eat in classrooms while others eat in the cafeteria, I believe, is?
Sure. Yep. And that's, the, this slide was kindergarten through grade 12. This was a, this was a complete spectrum of all levels. But but specifically at the elementary level, absolutely different spaces within the school as, as the space and staffing allow. Principals and admin teams and leadership teams and school communities are considering outdoor spaces as available, alternating between classrooms and cafeteria to provide more spaces in each of those environments. And then there are some school communities that that as a, as a facility may have smaller student enrollments and bigger cafeterias. And for, for these, these may not be necessary. They may have five, six feet distancing already.
And so, and I really appreciate you bringing out the, the outdoor option. I have some open campus style schools, some open campus elementary schools. And in a lot of ways, outdoor is a great resource for them. And so those, again, that decision and that plan is the principal utilizing their resources and their facilities to the best of their ability to serve their students, correct?
That is correct.
And do our schools have the staffing to support this?
Some of our schools have adequate staffing in order to make that happen.
Okay. As we look at, and this is something Dr. Tighan talks about, but our tiered volunteer tiers. I know when we're in high transmission, it's only outdoor volunteers. But for a school that might want to utilize outdoor dining, could they utilize parent volunteers to help facilitate that, that structure? Not a free for all, but if they had a structure in place, could they utilize volunteers?
Again, I'm gonna speak at the elementary level. That is, that is something that could be done as long as social distancing was maintained. And we would feel comfortable if that was also in the presence of a school staff member as well.
Okay, thank you. Distancing, okay. I think that addresses probably not all the concerns about lunch, but I think it gives a bigger picture of what, what our schools are doing. So thank you. Mr. Pritchard, could we talk a little bit about filters? I know you and I have talked about the, this week, but I think it would help our community to hear a little bit about filters and air scrubbers.
It's my favorite passion in this job.
I know.
Yes.
Oh, that was, I can give you a better lead in if you would like.
Yes. Well, no, what would you like to talk about? I mean, we're, we're gonna continue with what we did when we opened up school in the spring. And, and that way, we started airflow and flushing our systems two hours before school, during school, and then two hours after school. We have upgraded our filters within our schools where we were not able to upgrade our filters to which our systems could handle. We put air scrubbers in those classrooms. We are looking at purchasing, we're in the process of trying to purchase and get scrubbers for our lunch cafeterias. I think at the elementary school, that would be about three air scrubbers per cafeteria. For middle and high school, that would be about four to five.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna add to that, you forgot one thing that you did. You and your team also put air scrubbers beginning last spring in the health isolation rooms and others. So you know, a number of what we would call HVAC measures, you know, the air quality was, was of high priority to Lenny and his team. And, and I think another piece I would add to that is the, the frequent monitoring of the diagnostic system. So when some, they are monitoring systems and when they're not working at the ideal level, they're, they're able to get that notification and address it right away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard.
You're welcome.
A couple more, just quick questions about mitigation. What about our exceptional education classrooms? What additional mitigation do we have for those classrooms that often have students who cannot wear a mask and/or are medically complex? So what are we doing to help keep those students as safe as possible?
So to the greatest extent possible, we'll use some of the same mitigation strategies that you've heard in terms of trying to maintain the distancing between students. We're also gonna use social stories to try to build mass tolerance for our students and practice wearing masks to the greatest extent possible. Pardon me. In addition, we have additional PPE available for our staff who might have to do hand over hand or work closely with students. And we have masks and gowns and gloves for those classrooms as well.
Thank you. And then just one general question about mitigation. So we know that this Delta invariant is, has a higher rate of infection, but it's also infecting students, kids at a higher rate than the original iteration of coronaviruses. So looking comprehensively at our mitigation, I know it was very, very successful in the spring, our mitigation, with only four transmissions out of all of our school sites. Is our current mitigation, are we ready for this?
I'm gonna chime in, yes. And you know, we've watched, we certainly have information to go on, as you said, from our opening in the spring, our summer programming, which really just ended a few weeks ago. And in many cases, some of our buildings had as many students in them for summer academy as they, they will during the school year. And so, yes, absolutely. We, we are providing the safest environment possible for in person learning. And, you know, we've seen some other school divisions open up before us. Obviously, they're, they're a few weeks in. And I think as we're watching that and understanding through our partners in the health department, very similarly, while we're seeing cases come into schools, the mitigation is, is alleviating a spread within schools. So, you know, the inconvenience of quarantines and contact tracing and all those things are present. And so we have to be real about that. But, but our teams are vigilant and they're, they're prepared to take that, that challenge on so that we're keeping everyone safe.
Thank you. And one very last question. It is specific. And this is gonna need Mr. Thorpe. When we look at the elementary school schedule that you shared with us, I'm just trying to understand, is, how is this different than a typical year? Or does it match up with a typical year? You know, if we throw last year's schedule to the side comparing to other years, are there any major changes here?
Yes, let's please throw that to the side. This is very similar. We did make, we did make a small shift in grades kindergarten through three, where we made a, where we made a deliberate and intentional 20-minute block for writing to teach those discrete writing skills. In kindergarten through grade three and grades four and five, those writing applications are more easily embedded throughout the curriculum. That is really the only change.
Thank you. And I'm so excited to hear that there will be more designated time for writing, I think. We've talked about that in many other meetings, but how, how important that is. I am, I had a couple of questions, but I know Ms. Consella is gonna cover them with things like transportation, et cetera. So I'll throw it to her.
Okay. Well, you would think that everything would have been asked by now, but oh no, it has not been. And again, I just wanna thank not only everyone on the team that worked on today's presentation and trying to get this presentation done, but especially the principals, not just Dr. Fellows, Mr. Moose and Mr. Stein that presented today, but every single building leader in, in our schools. Thank you so much for, for everything you've done and you'll continue to do. And let me just say to anyone watching who may send your principal an email, just like perhaps when you send your school board an email, we are all getting so much messaging. We hear you and we will get back to you. But please show our principals some grace because nearly everything we send out does say, please contact your principal. So with that being said, I was, I was thrilled to see our social emotional being a priority. As we come back in a building, as Ms. Atkins covered, I'm thrilled to see remediation being a priority, as Ms. Ogborne covered. And then, of course, lunch has been a huge topic, whether you're elementary, middle or high school. But transportation, Mr. Pritchard or Mr. Ellis, that's another big concern that's showing up in the inbox. So where, where do we stand on hiring our bus drivers? And what incentives way may we be offering that make us more competitive, contrary to what folks may have read online or, or seen in the news? What special things are we doing?
Well, we, we're certainly doing a lot of, a lot of things to get drivers in and applicants in. We started off a couple of weeks ago with our Drive the Bus event that Dr. Cashwell participated in. Hopefully, everybody saw that to, to show people that you can drive a school bus if you get out there and try it. If you say that I can never do it without trying it, we giving you the opportunity. We're also looking at another time in October to, to make it even bigger and better, event that's gonna come up then. As far as, you know, becoming a bus driver, it's a process. So unless you already have your CDL and with your P and your S endorsements, it's a process where you gotta come in, you've gotta take those tests and do that, get on the road with students and, and do that, all those things that it takes to become a school bus driver. So with that, we are, we're implementing a new bonus that we're starting for it. So it's $1,000 for, for new drivers that are just coming in with no experience, $2,000 if you have a CDL, and $3,000 if you have your P and your S endorsements. So that's something that we're starting today to get more drivers in, mainly because the time it takes to get a driver in, if you already got those endorsements already, we're gonna get them, we hope, very quickly. One of the, one of the next steps that, of course, with that, with the pay, we need to, you know, work on that to see if we can be more competitive so that once those bonuses expire, we don't lose them again. So those are the things that we are certainly working on to get more people in, attractive to driving the bus for Henrico.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for explaining how we, we really are different than some of the other localities around us. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Consella, may I add one thing that Mr. Ellis probably doesn't want to toot his own horn, but I think in the monetary incentives are tremendous and certainly a big part of our recruitment effort. But I'll tell you, being part of the HCPS pupil transportation team is also something pretty special because of the leadership. And I think that speaks to Mr. Ellis and his entire team. And so while certainly I did hop on a bus and it was only made easy because of the trainer, the HCPS trainer that was there with me. And, you know, you can come in with no experience and they're prepared to train individuals. And so I think that's a bonus too. And we also have an awful lot of air-conditioned buses on the road. And I know not everyone does.
Correct, correct. We also have some, some incentives that are also for our current employees too, that don't, they don't wanna feel left out. That we already have the attendance bonus. We are also now incorporating the safe driver bonus as well. So there are opportunities for them, as well as overtime with the field trips and all the other various things that are going on. But there's, there's, there's opportunities to make a good wage working here.
Fantastic. And did you just say that, or, or have I heard, what, half, maybe half of our buses have air-conditioned?
Not half, but we're certainly working on all.
Almost half. I know we've been making.
Yeah, every bus that is now coming on the road is, certainly has air-conditioned as well as, you know, they already have seat belts on them. So that's one big plus that a lot of them also don't have as well.
And isn't that another thing that sets us apart maybe from other localities, is our investment in buses with air conditioning?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Just, just wanted to be really clear for whoever's listening.
Right.
That we'd like to hire you as a bus, bus driver if you're interested. And about how many, about how many vacancies do we have at this point?
Well, we're still, we're not immune to the, to the driver shortage. And we're still, you know, over 100. But we certainly have, from our driving event, we still had about 40 viable applicants. And they are all still in the pipeline. You know, we have nine, about nine in the, in the class currently, 22 that are gonna be in class on the first, and another 10 that are a little further down the road. So we've got people coming, but we need more.
Okay. That's good, that's good news. Okay, so when I'm thinking about bus shortages or our bus driver shortages, and I'm thinking about how is that gonna impact bus routes? And how is it gonna impact my school's schedule? Do we see it impacting our school schedules? And this may not be, I don't know if this would be you or you and some other team members speaking to how it may impact the school day.
Well, it's, you know, it's certainly gonna put a, put a, a lot of focus on the drivers getting one run and getting to another run. We already did a lot of double run. We already did a lot of double runs, but that was already built into the system. Now, now we're looking at, you know, with the vacancies, you doing a double run, you may do more than one double run. So there probably will be some, some late buses arriving and departing from schools in the afternoon. But we are certainly, like I said, we are doing everything that we can to incorporate certain routes and things like that. We also did a survey to get parents to respond to that if you don't ride the bus, because there's a lot, you know, we have over 40,000 that are eligible to ride.
Right.
But only about 29,000 ride. So we put out a survey to see if those that you know you're not going to drive the bus, let us know so we can take you off the route. And you know, if that's a stop at your home, we can eliminate that stop, increasing the buses getting to where they need to be. So with that 67% return response rate, that was pretty good.
Okay.
That, you know, we took off about 6,000 students off the rosters.
Well, that sounds good. Well, thank, thank you for speaking to transportation. I think, let me see who I need next. Could I see Ms. Francine Bolden, please? I've received, come on down, Ms. Bolden.
Next contestant.
So I'm asking the appropriate person, HR questions that I've received. Let's see, where do I begin with those? So, will teachers have a duty-free lunch five days a week?
Oh, I think that's for my friend.
Okay. Well, don't go for, I can come back. I can save that one for last. We'll circle back. Okay, here are the, okay, these are definitely for you, Ms. Bolden. Please highlight changes made to the sick leave policy for staff since our last board meeting.
Well, I think what people are really asking about is if they will have to utilize their sick leave balance or sick leave accrual for reasons related to quarantine. Is that really the question?
Yes, yes.
And we've made a change since the last board meeting. And at this time, as I said last week, at this, or last time, at this time, we have revamped our process and employees will be eligible to apply for emergency leave.
Okay.
And that is an application process. We will post a form forthwith and the.
The approval, who approves that? I know folks were interested in knowing that.
The requests are subject to, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. The requests are subject to approval and those approvals or denials are made by the HR department.
Okay, so by HR?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so here's, here's another one, but it involves transportation, but it involves, I think, you. With respective transportation and bus routes and possible second and third bus runs being done, how does this impact meeting schedules like faculty meetings, planning meetings normally held in our schools within contract time? Like, have we extended contract time or are we doing stipend pay or what does that look like?
I'm sorry, for which category of employee?
Well, I don't know. Well, in regards to transportation, for example, teachers doing duty in the afternoon. And if buses are running late on a first run, second run, third run, and the teacher duty runs out, have we offered additional money?
No, we haven't.
If they're past their contract time, we have not.
No, ma'am. And I would just share that teacher positions are non-exempt positions. So there are times, just in the regular course of a school day, a school year, where teachers would need to work outside of their contract hours, but they are exempt employees.
Okay, exempt. But then for others, for other staff members, that, I mean, it's probably going to vary for different folks. But if you're exempt, then you're just going to have to work extra hours, correct?
Well, I hope it's not hours, but extra time.
It may be, right, it may be, we don't know, but I just want folks to be prepared for that.
Yes, ma'am. So long and the short, exempt employees, there is flexibility with regard to the needs. So no additional pay.
Okay, so then I'm just going to highlight that. So things like, what about like for our new, for our new buildings that we're opening, are teachers still exempt and won't get any extra? They're, well, they get extra time to set up their classrooms outside of, are they going to have to spend their own personal time to set up their classrooms?
I would need assistance with that answer.
I hope I'm understanding the question and Mr. Thorpe's coming forward, but that we in the teacher contract have days that are built in which precede the students arriving when they begin to return to work, but the students have not yet returned. And part of that is time spent on administrative things with the building, understanding procedures, the safety plans, and some of that time is for setting up the classroom.
Okay, so that, that time is not going to be filled with meetings, that they really are going to have time because I mean, especially with the, those teachers who have not been in buildings or some of our teachers going into some of our new construction.
Yes. Well, I would say new construction buildings, that's a challenge, that's unusual and unprecedented. But we are working really hard to make sure teachers have the support to get set up and get things moved in. But by and large, the, the week preceding students' return is a time that, you know, principals are cognizant of balancing time for, for staff to be in the classroom setting up or setting up their teaching spaces as well as making sure they're up to date on things like the safety plan and other procedures for the year that are important for them to know as they, they greet students. And so, yeah, just I think oftentimes we think of the, the teacher contract days, there are many days built in beyond often the days teachers report to work in their contract for professional learning, those hours they're paid for above and beyond days they're actually reporting. And they're built in for those reasons exactly because we understand that that's sometimes an ongoing throughout the year process.
And then just in follow-up, since, since you're talking that topic, our stipends, and I believe we said this at the, at the August 12th meeting, but I just want to, since we're talking HR things, our stipends, our stipends were restored for duties, correct? The stipends that perhaps were cut in the budget last year, they were restored?
Yeah, I want to be clear though, that there were some stipends paid during this past school year in the spring for teachers teaching in person for if they did not, during lunch, run encumbered, you didn't have an unencumbered lunch, if they were planning for hybrid, parallel instruction.
Right.
Those have expired because the nature of the situation has changed. But you're talking about the traditional ongoing duties such as like student council, those sorts of things. Yes, they were. And I will note that a team looked at the list of duties, et cetera, and in some cases, some of those duties were expired and not reinstated because they were jobs that were, had over, you know, decades or more been on the list and, and become subsumed in actually in job responsibilities. But by and large, yes, where it wasn't a budget issue and those were restored.
So then, to HVA, you know, two, two of the most asked questions I have gotten would be, what would interrupt? And again, I have to, this has to be said once again on the record because I've seen, I've heard it so many times. What would interrupt in-person learning, especially with COVID numbers continuing to go up? And two, is there any room left in HVA for my child?
I'll tackle both of those. So HVA is full and enrollment for HVA closed in May. We have maintained a waiting list and allowed people to be added to a waiting list as we continue to try to do our best to balance family needs and desires. But you know, recognize that in accordance with Senate Bill 1303, all Virginia school divisions will open for five days of full in-person learning. And so we're prepared to do that and do it in a very safe manner. But we are also working to accommodate those who want virtual. And so we've maintained a waitlist which we've now expired. We offered a last opportunity and we'll see if there are some things we can do with staffing that won't be at the detriment of our five days of in-person learning in our buildings to allow us to be able to pull some students off the waitlist. But to your question as to what would close a school, so we're using an individualized approach. So it's to the classroom, to the grade level, to the school. So we certainly are monitoring whether there would be cases that may require more than a few individuals quarantining. We'd be leaning to our partners in the Health Department to advise us on when it may be a case where an entire classroom needs to quarantine and then they might shift for a period of virtual learning at that point. It might be based on information or exposure as we work with our contact tracers and our Health Department, that a situation that might warrant a grade level or a whole school. And you know, an example I might give that's of pre-COVID era, it's hard to remember that, but if you might have seen something like the flu at times shut down a grade level or a school for deep cleaning, you know, and again, those are always times that we would be working with the Health Department to determine when there's a health issue that's impacting our ability to provide that in-person service or we need to take a pause for cleaning or whatever it might be for quarantining. So it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Well, since you're on our, since you're on a roll, will teachers have a duty-free lunch five days a week?
I mean, that is the intent, yes. So because we're not in the position we were before with the hybrid models and those sorts of things, we're set up to resume in-person instruction as it was.
Okay. Let's see, who can, who can speak to secondary reading supports? Good afternoon. I saw that we're focused on the elementary and I also see, you know, the secondary on our slides as well. How have we changed what we're doing at the secondary level? I'm very excited about continuing to meet the needs of our middle schoolers and high schoolers who still may have some challenges and we have opportunities to help them. So can you tell me what we're going to be doing differently this fall?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we are excited for a variety of things that are different. The first being pre-assessments that we will be giving, we'll be using the growth assessments in middle school. So grades six through eight will get pre-assessment data from those. And then grades six through 12, we will be using the HMH Into Literature product that has a pre-assessment embedded into it. And this is really the first time that we will have a pre-assessment for high school. So we'll get a variety of data from that. We'll get a reading level from that. We'll also get some information on where they are with their high school SOLs from that. And then from there, we can look at the variety of supports that need to be provided. So for the first time at middle school, we have an actual countywide intervention plan that all middle schools will be following. Using that placement data, we will decide who needs tier-two intervention. And there are a variety of ways that can be delivered. It could be delivered through the tier-one classroom, it might be delivered through a double-block situation or a reading class. However, that will be direct teacher instruction on predetermined lessons based on their needs as readers. And then we will supplement that with the Lexia Core Program, which is a digital resource. At high school, we will be looking to help our teachers first address that in the tier-one environment. So how, how they might use small grouping in tier-one and scaffolding of instruction in tier-one to attend to the needs of our readers at high school. We are excited that we have a new high school literacy coach coming on board and that person will be helping us also look at ways that we might implement intervention in the high school classroom.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Believe it or not, Reverend Cooper, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. Quick question, Dr. Cashwell, you might want to just answer this for me. So if a student is required to quarantine for a number of days, is there a plan for the student to continue virtually for those days that they're missing person?
Likely not. If they're an in-person student, likely wouldn't necessarily be virtual. It'd be very much like if a student needed to be out for any other reason, the teacher would arrange to send work, assignments with the student, check in. It may be that there's an opportunity to reconnect virtual to the class, but given that most classrooms aren't set up as they were last year for concurrent live, hybrid instruction, you know, it would depend on the situation. But know this, teachers, as they always have been, are prepared to provide students with assignments, work, and assistance for the time period they'd need to be away from class.
Because you did broach the second part to me for that, the entire classroom that they're required to quarantine, I'm assuming there are contingency plans in place to continue possibly virtual.
Correct. That would likely be a case where then it would switch to virtual because it wouldn't be a teacher doing concurrent, some kids in person, some, you know, providing assistance to those who may be virtual, live, real-time. And so, yes, if a whole class were to go, that would be the intent, to maintain continuity of instruction by leveraging the virtual.
Thank you so much. Where's Ms. Vittek? Is she still here? All right, there she goes. All right, so many of my peers were present as well as I with our superintendent when Secretary Cadoza came and we were so happy to host him. And I enjoyed the, the interaction with students and staff who spoke, who spoke eloquently about the efficacy of Wellness Wednesdays. And Dr. Cashwell was with me and many staff members this past week at our town hall in the Fairfield District. Thank you again, Dr. Cashwell. And so she heard me say this, and I'm going to say it again, that they spoke about the efficacy of Wellness Wednesday. And we've had an overwhelming amount of feedback regarding that efficacy. And all those students are required to be in school five days a week and asynchronous day at home would not be permitted for our in-person learners. Could there be plans to use this designated day to focus on planning remediation, social emotional wellness? Speak to that for me, please.
Sure. So we did, we embraced Wellness Wednesday last year and it really was an excellent time for our students to connect with their teachers, to do office check-ins, for teachers to kind of reconnect, engage in some self-care as well as plan. But one of the things that we did incorporate was identifying Wednesday as that designated day to provide those targeted social emotional learning lessons to our students in grades K through 12. So although we embed social emotional learning activities and interactions throughout all of our courses every day, we identified that designated time to support and lift up those skills and teach those skills to our students. And although it's not Wellness Wednesday and that we're not going to be in class, we're not going to be at home having that, that day in the middle of the week, we are still honoring that commitment to providing those targeted lessons at least one day a week during designated time so that those wellness activities, those social emotional learning opportunities and lessons don't get lost or pushed aside. So again, while we're going to be in class on Wednesdays, we do still hope that we're going to give some of the feel of that Wellness Wednesday. We're going to maintain that by offering the support to our students.
No, I appreciate that. I think in essence, if I could use this analogy, we created a baseline and that we don't want to, you know, go down, we want to, we want to ascend, we want to go up and to kind of build on that foundation that we've set. So thank you for kind of clarifying our intent and our intentionality of basically building on that, but not necessarily naming it what it was named, but ensuring that the intent of it still goes forth.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Quick question. So we talked briefly about the plexiglass shields. What would be the procedure for requesting such?
We had so many on hand that they're still likely available in each classroom, except in the classrooms here or there. So a student would simply ask to use one, but we'll certainly, and I think Mrs. Atkins had some feedback similar to that, making sure we operationalize some of that at the school, at each school. And again, like we said, some things will be different school to school. We'll make sure that at the elementary, secondary level, et cetera. We have made it clear to students what that process would look like at each school. We'll make sure our families understand that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ellis, where's he at, real quick? Did he, man, you should have stayed up here. Come on, Mr. Ellis.
I think it's fair to say for our presenters, kind of hang up front. Though I, yeah.
Well, as he's walking, I want to thank Ms. Consella for speaking about that because one of my questions was concerning, are we considering increasing the pay rate, offering sign-on bonuses to help with recruitment efforts? So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we are doing that for new drivers, but also I'm happy to hear the, the intentional effort on your, your part and your staff's part of rewarding the current drivers that work for us. So thank you for that, sir. So quickly, I'm not going to rehash everything because I want to kind of second what she said about, we know what's going on. But have you explored any outside organizations for transportation? Can you speak to some, something, you know, have we considered or explored outside organizations for transportation or what's something creative?
You mean like contracted transportation? I have, I've looked into it. I know that, but, but I know that if, you know, with Richmond, they have, they do it for their special needs programs, that they're still looking for the same people for their pools. So doing that and exploring that, they're still going to be pulling from the same pool of non-existent drivers. So it's a possibility, but I mean, but I know that they're in the same situation as we are.
I'll note something creative the transportation team has done in looking at, you know, as we've been adding new buses to our fleets, we've also added some smaller transportation. We've looked at leveraging some of our grant funding through SRTA to purchase. We've looked at leveraging some of our grant funding through SRT to purchase minivans or smaller transportation, because those don't require a CDL driver. And so understanding the challenges Mr. Ellis described before about the length, we might recruit a driver in, but they don't yet have their CDL. So that's time we have, and we're willing and want to train you, but to get folks on the road and driving. And so for some of our special needs transportation or other times when we're not transporting a full bus full of students, we're able to put those vehicles on the road in the future. And I think that was a really creative solution his team came up with.
Right, because currently, right now, we have, we could have a special needs bus with one kid that's going somewhere that we have to use a CDL licensed driver to do it. So we certainly are getting more vans to do that and handle that as well. There is a private organization that does that as well, but they are expensive. So that's also one more reason we're trying to bring it back in-house.
Well, we know, I appreciate you making the statement and Dr. Cashwell adding to it, because I think it's important that our constituents know and our community knows that we are exhausting every available creative measure to ensure transportation of our children so that we're not going to just take the stance, we don't have enough drivers, that's it. We're proactively looking for ways to be creative, to leverage or even employ outside organizations to assist us as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Next, I just want to ask a few questions in regards to the Henrico Virtual Academy. So Dr. Cashwell, thank you again for just reiterating that yesterday was the last day to apply to get on the waiting list. So a question I want to raise first is how many students are currently on the waiting list? Who can answer that for me?
Well, we noticed in looking through the waiting list that a number of entries were duplicates. So families had signed up before, and I guess they wanted to be sure we knew they were interested, and they signed up again. So I know that they were working to kind of scrub that and make sure that they had taken that into account. But I believe it was into the thousands at the end of the time you could sign up. And so they're working to again get that. But we'll get that data to you as soon as they finalize it.
Will that data include the breakdown of elementary, middle, and high students on the waitlist?
Sure, we're happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you so much. So to put, you kind of segue into my next question, you probably really can't answer this, even with Ms. Bowden's help. But to help put in perspective the demand for HVA versus the supply of staff hired to date and available, I was going to ask, could you give a ballpark figure, ballpark figure of how many additional teachers would need to be hired to meet the current demand?
Oh, well, based off of the waiting list alone, that would be hundreds. And so given our obligation to provide in-person instruction, that simply wouldn't be possible within the resources of the staff that we have. And so that's why we've been very clear to say that while we're going to do our best to shift staff as we can to meet needs, we are obligated to meet that in-person instruction. And so there is not a guarantee, if you're on the waitlist, that you're going to be able to be served. But we're certainly working really hard. You talked about creative solutions. You've never seen a team work so hard to try to figure out what options might be available so that we can meet this request of our families. But trying to understand that, you know, I was really pleased and proud that we developed our virtual academy. And in many school divisions, I'd say most are saying, you know, a virtual option might be through another provider. But we really wanted to make sure we were creating that option within HCPS. But there are certainly limitations with that, and we acknowledge this. But we still endeavor to do our best to meet needs and hope that our families who are on the waiting list and aren't accepted understand that we are ready with open arms to receive you in person in our schools in the safest manner possible. We understand the nerves, the fear. We hear you, and we want to work with you because as APA and CDC have indicated, and as emphasized with the return plans for all Virginia public schools to open in person, the safety, the mental health needs of kids can best be met in person. And so while there are some, certainly some concerns, and we're mindful of meeting those, and the mitigation strategies being layered, we want to see our students back with us.
So that being stated, I know the question's been asked before, but just reiterate when families would be notified about the application standing?
By the 30th, yes.
Okay. So for students on the waitlist and will not be offered a seat in HVA for the start of this school year, explain what happens to you or someone on staff next with them or their application?
Well, they, if you're on the waitlist and you're not provided the virtual option, you should report to the homeschool where you are enrolled. And hopefully, you have registered at your homeschool. If you're a new student, you are on the list. If you haven't, then right away, you're going to want to contact your homeschool and make sure you are registered, and they will stand ready to be prepared to receive you. Otherwise, you're probably, if you're already registered, you're on a class list, and you should make sure that you report on Wednesday, September 8th, to your school.
So if for some reason spaces are available, are we offering rolling admission or just no?
Do you mean after the school year were to begin? Likely no. And I think this comes to the staffing implications you mentioned earlier. But we'll consider what options might be available to us. And we certainly were asking families that come into the virtual academy to make a year-long commitment, because again, we want to appropriately plan for and staff to meet the needs of students in a high-quality manner in both the virtual environment as well as the in-person environment.
Well, thank you for that point of clarity. Last question. So I've received some feedback from some parents and guardians with concerns about next steps, and they have contacted HVA office number, but have been unable to make contact. And I know the team is busy planning for a robust back-to-school experience. So what's the best way for parent and guardian to contact the HVA with their questions and concerns?
Well, that probably is, or via email. And certainly, the entire school leadership team stands ready to assist with answering any of those questions. So we have a team of directors at the elementary. We have, you know, you know, Dr. Champ's been before us, and Dr. Farrell at the high school level. So that's certainly another place to go with questions. And I think the big question now, and many of them are coming in, are, you know, when will I know and what happens next? And so we did provide an email clarification to all of our families. So trying to keep the word out there that we appreciate your patience and understanding as we work through this.
Well, thank you so much. That's all I have.
To the entire back-to-school team of presenters and others who came forward for the Q and A, thank you so much for, it was a very important presentation, and certainly, again, can't thank them enough for their incredible efforts. So our next presentation for the board is our Health Committee update, as is tradition. And so Dr. Tigen's going to come forward. I see that Robin Gilbert is here as well, joining her. And so they're here to provide an overview of all things Health Committee. Dr. Tigen?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I am here to provide an update, and Ms. Gilbert is with me in case there's specific questions that she could answer after I finish here. Today's agenda includes the current transmission levels, so we'll look at those. And then we'll look at an update on the HCPS vaccination efforts and review contact tracing, because we know there's been many questions about that. And so as we start with the transmission level, we've been, as we've been committed throughout the pandemic, our Health Committee regularly reviews and monitors the health data relevant to Henrico County and the impact it has on our schools. Two weeks ago, I shared that the transmission levels in Henrico had reached the high transmission level. As of this past Monday, we remain at that high transmission level. Based on the seven-day data from August 15th to the 21st, the new cases per 100,000 was 214.9, and the percentage of PCR tests that were positive during that same seven-day period was 7.3%. Two weeks ago, we did not discuss the level of school impact, as we needed to set new baselines for September 2021. Given the increase in the number of students returning to in-person learning, we will be using the 2018-19 data as the baseline for student absenteeism and staff capacity. The approach will be to compare the data from week to week, so from 2018-19 to 2021-22. Transmission within school will be based on the number of cases and the resulting outbreaks, just like it was last year. The Health Committee will look at how many schools at each level, as the school level will drive the conversations between the Virginia Department of Health and School Health Services to determine the level of impact. It is the school-level data that will drive decisions about classroom, grade level, or school closures. As we look at what are our efforts towards vaccination, what have they been, and what are the results? Last week, we once again partnered with Virginia Department of Health and the Richmond-Henrico Health District to provide a third vaccination clinic at Brooklyn Middle School, and it was on Wednesday, August 18th. This was to assist our families in addition to the COVID-19 vaccine, but also allowing our rising seventh graders to be able to receive their TDAP and meningococcal vaccines. And our rising 12th graders also were able to get the meningococcal vaccine. And both our rising seventh and 12th graders had an opportunity to receive the HPV vaccine as well, but that is not a required vaccine for school entry. The table on this slide shows the number of each vaccine administered. Overall, 288 vaccines were administered last week, and overall, 837 have been given across the three sites from June through August. In addition to these vaccination efforts, our school registrars continue to share the Richmond-Henrico Health District's schedule for immunization events with our families. In addition, the four vaccines provided at the school sites, other health immunizations can be obtained at these health department events. We know how important vaccination is in the prevention and spread of COVID-19 and continue to highly encourage all who are eligible and able to be vaccinated to get their vaccination without delay. As there continues to be questions about how full vaccination impacts quarantining, the Health Committee felt it was important to provide some clarification. Let's start by defining a close contact. If just one person is wearing a mask, or neither person is wearing a mask, and they are at a distance of less than six feet for a total of 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period, that would be considered a close contact, and that person would need to quarantine. The need to quarantine is based on the vaccination status of the person deemed to be the close contact. So if a person is fully vaccinated, and they have close contact with a COVID-positive person, they do not need to quarantine if they have no symptoms. However, they should wear a mask and get tested three to five days later. Please know that all cases are worked through contact tracing to verify vaccination status and symptoms. If a student is not fully vaccinated, and they have close contact with a COVID-positive person, they should quarantine for 14 days to be safe. Sorry, behind. So at this time, we're happy to answer any questions, and we hope that information helps our families with some of the questions they've been asking.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tigen. Ms. Cancela?
Thank you. Now, I really appreciate those last few slides specifically, because those are the things, you know, as we were talking about the, what does it look like when we go back in our buildings, you know, that our principals are going to be sending out to families soon. The last few slides, the close contact and the quarantining, everyone wants to know. So thank you for sharing that information publicly. At the last meeting, Ms. Gilbert said that we had, we were going to hire four contact tracers and train them. How's that going? Have we found them yet?
We have hired two, and we're still fielding applications for the two other positions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then, will the COVID rates in individual schools be shared with families and staff this year, similar to the way it was last year?
We'll show the cases, but yes, we're continuing, we're starting a new ledger for the beginning of the school year, but it will be the same process we used last year.
Same process, okay. And then, I'm not, I wasn't sure where to put this question, so I just put it here in health and safety. Are the students in middle and in high school responsible for cleaning their desks again this year? Is that part of our strategy? Yes?
It is. As far as, you know, as students come into a classroom, there'll be wipes available if they want to wipe down their desk, but also at the end of a class period, they'll be encouraged to wipe down the desk before they leave for the next person coming in. And so it's really about helping students feel comfortable, even if it's cleaning more often.
Okay. And then, what did, what do siblings, parents want to know, if you're in a house where you have siblings that actually get quarantined, what does it look like for the siblings? They just have to remain symptom-free and not come down, right?
Right. You know, it's, a sibling would be not a contact of the infected person, and so they would not be required to quarantine, but they, family would want to watch for symptoms. Ms. Gilbert, I just want to wrap. Add anything?
Ms. Cancela, if there's a positive in the house, then the house would be considered a quarantine.
Okay.
Be a close contact. Now, we would work that relative to vaccination status. And if they were unvaccinated, whether they could quarantine and keep that positive case isolated in the house without continuing to expose the other family members, to develop what amount of time they need to be out. The most amount of time an unvaccinated household exposure would be out would be 24 days.
Okay. Are we, we're going to have all these things out there again this year, right, in whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
If this, then this, if this.
We're happy to answer those questions. The nurses have all been trained on the John Hopkins contact tracing courses, and we'll be able to answer these questions at the school level. And we are going to do everything we can to minimize the amount of quarantine time any student or staff have to spend out of the building.
Okay. And thank you. That's all I have today.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Shea?
I only have four questions. All right, here we go. So let's loop back with, since we're on contact tracing, let's just keep going with contact tracing. So if, so we said if one person or neither person is masked, a close contact is within six feet for 15 minutes, et cetera. What if both people are masked? What is considered a close contact?
If both people are masked and closer than that six feet for 15 minutes or more, then you're going to look at the vaccinated versus unvaccinated status to determine whether they need to quarantine or not.
All right. So they are still a close contact, even if both people are masked within six feet? What if a student has, let's say, a runny nose one day? So they haven't had any confirmed, they haven't been contacted, they don't have any confirmed exposure, but they happen to have a runny nose one day. Mom and I keep them home just to watch. Are they out 10 days?
They are unless they, you know, for some reason, they go to a doctor, and there's a different diagnosis that says it's not, you know, that it's confirmed to be something other than COVID from a physician, at which point, when they're symptom-free with no fever-reducing medication and fever-free without that medication, they can come back to school. It is dependent, and I know that Ms. Gilbert's ready to jump in, that the transmission rates too within the community. Remember, there's at different levels.
So once we get down to, what is it, moderate, then it goes back to the regular 24 hours?
Yes.
And the nurses will work with families. So we know our children have a variety of medical conditions. If a child has a diagnosis of allergies, and this is something that we chronically see with that child, and the nurse is going to work with that child and that family to get them back in and to not keep them out. Same with reflux. You know, I've got an upset stomach. Well, I have a history of reflux. Well, that's reflux, not a symptom of COVID. So we will work with the families. The nurses will make those assessments and look at the history to try and develop what that whole picture looks like, rather than just saying, oh, that's a symptom of COVID, you're out for 10 days.
Okay.
And if they do go out with a symptom, a new onset symptom, then a physician can write a note for them to return to school, and they a note for them to return to school, and they come back based on what that physician says they should, should be back in school for.
All right. Let me just, I know some families back in the spring expressed a challenge with that, a challenge with a physician definitively saying they don't have COVID because, you know, they could have tested two days later, and that physician doesn't know what they've done in the two days. As we work with families, I think we just need to figure that out a little bit, that, you know, you get what I'm saying, that, so that we can really delineate and define students who may have had a symptom but aren't a COVID risk, so we can get them back to learning, right? Obviously, we want to be safe about it, but we don't want the same child being quarantined for two weeks at a time, you know, every, you know, be back in school two days, oh, I have a cough, I'm out another two weeks, that sort of thing. So we need to be smart about it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. While 90%, probably 95% of my constituents I talk to are thrilled we are wearing masks, there are a very few that still don't understand why the recommendation was made from you all for everyone to be masked. So can you summarize why that recommendation was made?
Right. At the Health Committee meeting, quite honestly, the conversation was looking at the community transmission levels as well as specific incidents that our schools were, were dealing with, whether it was health, sports teams. And so the decision was to wear masks so that we could protect that instructional environment as much as possible, reduce the, the risk of students being, exposing other students or being exposed and having quarantines happen. As you stated, our kids need to get back to learning.
I know one piece that was emphasized in their last presentation around their recommendation for masks was, was absolutely the community transmission at the time, as well as the new CDC guidance. So there had been new CDC guidance issued related to masking that differed from previous guidance. So I think that was something that they took into consideration as well.
Are masks infallible?
What do you mean?
Are masks perfect? Are they gonna?
No.
No, there's nothing that's perfect.
And that's why we use layers of mitigation, and so we understand, you know, that the layers matter, and so it's, it's the masks, it's the hand washing, it's all these things not coming to work when you have a fever or are sick or to school, all the things you've talked about. All of those strategies are layers that protect us and each other and prevent the spread of COVID-19.
So no one single mitigation is going to provide 100% of protection. It's all about each mitigation reducing risk, and when you layer them together, it's the best we have to offer.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And then, very last question. Back in the spring, I, and maybe early summer, I know you were looking into partnering for voluntary testing for our stakeholders within our buildings. Where are we with that? Is that still a possibility? Is it? And I want to highlight, it's voluntary.
Correct. We have, we have been working with the Glen Lee Community Learning Center and the telehealth clinic that will be there, working with those physicians from MCV to try to work out the protocols as to how best we can orchestrate that in, in that particular school, and then we'd use that as a learning environment, should we want and be able to expand it to other schools.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Mrs. Augbrun?
I'll be fairly quick. Obviously, we've both, we've all referred to a number of emails that we're getting, but we get a lot, they have the same questions, a sort of a theme going on, that parents are concerned. There, some will say, I'm having great anxiety, some will say, I'm really scared, whatever. Completely understand that emotion, and we all are doing what we can to protect kids. So this is sort of, I know it's a hard question, but how can we reassure parents that we're doing what we can do and that we're following the guidelines that we have? I mean, I know it's a level of trust that we expect people to have in our team and what we're doing, but it has, I have been asked this a number of times, do we have an FAQ anywhere? Is there, where do people go that haven't read every email? I mean, because we have sent so much information out, and they might have missed it. So where do we, where do we send people to get the questions answered and the most efficient way?
Can I go back to the first question about the trust?
Absolutely.
Because I feel like, I, I hope with our families, we've built trust about the implementation and effectiveness of our mitigation plans through our spring, our summer, you know, as we go into the fall here. We had many schools, whether there were some even in the spring, that were almost at full capacity as far as the number of students. This summer, we had many, many students in our buildings, and, you know, the fact that we did not have the number of cases that we're seeing other places, I think shows that our practices and how we implemented before even bringing kids back in the spring with our adults. I hope that provides some trust in our families, that we have good practices and that we know how to implement them.
Well, and I don't think, honestly, we give that answer often enough. We haven't referred to the last few months and how things have gone successfully in our schools. So it might be something as we answer those questions and as principals and other members of the team get that, we can look at the historical data that we have to show that what we're doing is working, because as Mrs. Shea pointed out, it's not any one thing, it's the totality of what's being done by our staff. But to the FAQ, I mean, Mr. Jinx and his team send out so many emails, and they're so great at, at communication and getting the word out. Do we have an FAQ anywhere? Has this been considered?
There's what I refer to as the back-to-school page of the website. It's considered the lead item on the homepage of the website. It represents what has gone out in email to our families and has the added bonus of five translations on that page as well. The information is shared directly with our principals for them to cut and paste into additional messages that they do. But to your point, there is clearly an opportunity next week to once again ask for the audience's attention on all of this. And what Dr. Cashwell and I discuss frequently is, how much can we ask of our audience when it comes to reading and absorbing and comprehending all of this material? There's little doubt, no doubt, of its critical importance, and so our task is to deliver it in a way that folks will find meaningful, relevant, in a way to understand that it's not just there for them when the email crosses at some point next week, but is easily accessible in September, October, November, when they want to refer back to it. The short answer, Mrs. Augbrun, is that the information is available on our website in an FAQ form. It represents the previous versions that we've communicated to our families with an opportunity to re-up that information next week as we approach the first day of school.
That's awesome. And I think that's good for us to know as board members, that we can refer to that information and say, this is where you can find the answers to your questions, because we, you know, to your point, we send things out, we can't make people read it, they might miss it, they might have been on, you know, at work, on vacation, whatever, this time of year. So I think it's, it's important to note that it is there, we do put it on the website for any information, that people can find it, and, and when in doubt, they, they email a board member, it seems, or, or, you know, Dr. Cashwell, or someone on the team. But I appreciate you pointing out where they can find what they.
And to be fair, sometimes it is quicker to go directly to your board member. I can empathize with anyone who says there is simply a tonnage of information available on our website, and for good reason, because everything that appears on there is important to an audience of some kind. And so, asking for our audience's attention next week will be a key focus for us, and doing it in a way that will not feel as overwhelming to, to some folks.
And your team has been so great about getting out the information that we need, and now they can access it in a very easy, easy way. I appreciate that. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Augbrun. Mrs. Atkins?
Thank both of you for being here as always. I don't know how many times I can say thank you to both of you, as well as the entire Health Committee, because we meet often, but maybe folks don't know, in between those meetings, we are still working. And so, ever so grateful for the work. In getting prepared for back-to-school, can you share with families the required immunizations for enrollment?
They have to be by age.
So our kindergartners knew this year had the hepatitis A vaccine, in addition to all the regularly required T-DAP, polio, MMR, and Virecilla, sorry. Reinforce for a second. So there's five right now, and they are on various schedules of when they need to be provided to the child. What I call the kindergarten surprise is the ultimate one, when you go into kindergarten and you basically get everybody at one time. Hepatitis B is also on there, I didn't, didn't list that. So that's our kindergartners. We don't get another update of immunizations until we get into the rising 7th grade age. Some of our 6th graders get that HPV that Dr. Tigen spoke of. That is not a school entrance-required vaccine, it is required by the state, just not to come into the school. But the T-DAP to our rising 7th graders, as well as new this year, the meninococcal for our rising 7th graders, and also new this year is a meninococcal for our rising 12th graders. So T-DAP in 7th grade, meninococcal in 7th grade, meninococcal in 12th grade, and everything that you get in kindergarten, which is a lot.
Fantastic. I know that, you know, getting the inoculation for COVID is at top of mind, but we also have to remember that back-to-school encompasses other areas of our health, and that also needs to, to be at the forefront for many of our families. Is there a place on our website that lists the required immunizations for enrollment?
Yes.
Mr. Jinx says yes. I know we have it on the Immunization/Health History Form, which is also located on the website, but specifically I would defer to.
Mr. Jinx, for families, could you just share where that stuff is located?
Speaking to the tonnage of information that we do have available online, which can be both positive and challenging at times, but the Health and Safety page of the website does have a tab called Immunizations, and that's where the information is articulated.
Wonderful. Thank you. The second question I have is, can you share the communication process between a parent and a nurse for a child who has a condition requiring medicine? Or, for example, they have asthma, diabetes, or some other illness? Can we share that process with families, particularly those that are new to our county and those that just need the refresher?
So there are a couple of pathways there, Ms. Atkins. The first one is if your child needs a prescription medication, if that medication is going to last less than 10 days, we can take the prescription bottle and administer off of the prescription bottle with a parent's signature. If it is an over-the-counter medication, there's a form, again, that the parent would fill out for us, giving us permission to administer the over-the-counter medication. That should come to the school in an unopened bottle or package, and we have to administer by the label, the prescribing label. So we can't give 15 Tylenol to your child if the label says we can only give one, based on age or weight. So that's the two prescription, two medication forms. If we have physician orders that are more detailed for chronic conditions, tube feedings, nebulizers, you mentioned asthma, we have an asthma action plan. We also have a diabetic management, medical management plan, and we have a seizure action plan. So specific to some disease, chronic disease processes, we have specific plans out there, and our partners in the community are very familiar with these, and your school nurse is ready to help if parents have any questions about that.
Thank you. That's something that, that several families have reached out. You know, we talk a lot about getting shots for COVID, but can we start also talking about some of the traditional things around health and getting back to school? So I greatly appreciate the refresher and reminders to make sure that our parents are aware of those things. The other question I have is for students enrolled in Henrico Virtual Academy. Are they required to get those same immunizations since they're not in the building?
Yes, ma'am, they are. Even though they're not in the building, they're held to the same accountability. So our kindergartners need their physicals and need all those immunizations. If you're a rising 7th grader, a rising 12th grader, we're going to be looking for that meninococcal and reaching out to you. And in conjunction with this question and your last question, our school nurses are back in their clinics today. So parents, if you have questions, please reach out to your school nurses. They are in the schools and ready to answer those questions and help you with whatever your needs may be.
Thank you. I, I, again, will stress that COVID is certainly at top of mind, but there are some other things from a health perspective that we also need to pay attention to, and I have started getting questions around, if my child isn't in the building, is that required for enrollment? And so to reiterate?
It is.
Yes, 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 and yes. And another question I have, and Ms. Bolden, if you would, wouldn't mind coming to the microphone as I share the question, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Tigen and Ms. Gilbert, don't go far, because she may need backup with this particular question, so I don't want you to have to walk too much. But will students that experience long COVID symptoms require a medical note for excused absences?
Students?
Mm-hmm. I'm going to come to the staff one next.
Anytime our students have a chronic condition, which we would consider a COVID long hauler, it is most important for our parents to collaborate with their school nurse and their instructional team, so we know how best to help them. So that partnership is, is really a four-legged process. We want to include the student, the family, our community physician, as well as your school team. And so anytime we can collaborate in that manner, the student always wins.
Okay, so you will need a note from the medical doctor for long COVID symptoms?
Need, as in required? I don't want to say required, but again, that collaborative and communication process when a child is going to have trouble looking at a screen long-term, that may be a situation where we want to put in some accommodations, and we would, at that point, need that note. So again, that collaboration and that communication between those four pillars are just imperative.
So in essence, if that is, if a family is experiencing that, the first step is to contact the nurse and have that conversation. One of the questions in the way that it was received to me was, okay, I know this is a symptom, do I need to take my child back to the doctor in order for them to continue school? And so that's, I want to give you some context into where that question was coming from. So thank you for that. And so the other is the flip for staff. So for staff that have received the medical note for experiencing long COVID and now is offered or approved for disability under ADA and end up missing work, what is the process so that it's not, they're not, their employment is not impacted negatively?
Okay, I know you want to clarify.
You stay this way. Okay, so you used a lot of terms there, so if we could back up just a bit and just clarify for the public, just what we're talking about.
Sure, so, absolutely. So there are situations for individuals that have tested positive for COVID to experiences, to continue experiencing some of those symptoms also called long COVID. Also, if you're experiencing those symptoms, symptoms in such a way that it does sometimes stop your ability to do things as you normally would, you may go to the doctor, and the doctor may medically diagnose you with long COVID, and then you can apply for disability under ADA. And so if we have staff that has that situation and end up missing work because of that, what is the process that they would use so that their employment isn't negatively impacted? In other words, they may miss work because of some of the symptoms that they're experiencing.
Right. The simple answer is for our employees to contact our HR specialist, Wendy Reyes, who deals with medical accommodations, requests for, requests for accommodations, leave, that type of thing. So again, that's Wendy Reyes. So again, that's Wendy Reyes in the Human Resource Department, and we can walk through and help folks through those processes.
I'm taking notes, one moment.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a support system in place for staff that have tested positive and they're doing well now, but socially, socially, emotionally need support? Can you share the support mechanisms we have in place for staff?
So again, not to put Wendy out there each and every time, but Wendy is our contact, and we work with individuals on a case-by-case basis to determine what their needs are and to route them appropriately to different or the appropriate resource.
Ms. Atkins, just to add here, we also have the EAP program available for employees, which is a huge benefit and an awesome resource.
Right, that's definitely one of our resources. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you so much. To those who have asked me those questions that unfortunately, just like myself, at one point tested positive, and you are a long hauler, or you experienced some of those symptoms, please take advantage of the resources that we have right here in Henrico County Public Schools with the Employee Assistance Program, or EAP, is what Ms. Gilbert has shared. Also, Wendy, say that name again.
Wendy Reyes.
Graves.
R-E-Y-E-S, Wendy Reyes.
Reyes. So Wendy Reyes is the individual that you can contact to get the support that you need. This is new for many. There's also more research about it. And so we're going to learn this thing together, but just know socially, emotionally, and physically, there are supports that are available to you, and you can use them right now. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Director of HR, don't walk off so fast. I'll start with you, so you can stay right there. I hope your shoes are comfortable. So just a quick question. Thank you so much for clarifying the process in regards to the emergency leave, because I'm so grateful. Ms. Consella's kind of beat me, so I wish I could go when she went, but it was a big, 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 big sense of consternation to a lot of people. Only question I have in regards to that, are part-time employees and temporary employees, are they eligible for that as well?
Yes, sir.
So it's full-time, part-time, and temporary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, madam. You may go on back down the aisle. Dr. Tiggen, quickly, just quick, I don't know if you can answer this question. Would any of our schools offer COVID testing onsite during the school year?
Right now, we do not offer COVID testing onsite at any of our schools.
Okay, so we do not anticipate doing that during the year?
Well, we anticipate that at Glen Lee, because we have the telehealth, that that would be something available for the students there.
As you stated, that we would look at the learnings, and then if necessary, we can make the application other places.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, so if a staff member is not, not fully vaccinated, has close contact with a COVID-positive person, quarantines for a few days, but gets tested and receives a negative result, must that student or staff member continue to quarantine for 14 days?
We have not required testing. The Health Department does provide opportunities there, but we have, you know, because of equity issues and not knowing what the access is, that is not something that we've promoted out there for our families.
Just wanted to make sure that they could hear that, that answer to that question. Next one, does a COVID-positive staff or student who is quarantined for the required number of days have to submit a negative test resort, result in order to return to school?
No, they just need to be symptom-free for 24 hours after they've completed the quarantine period.
That's so important, thank you so much.
And if they've completed the symptoms before that, then they're good to go on day 14.
Well, thank you so much for that.
Come back in on day 15.
Now, Mr. Jenks, what was the word he used? Was it tonnage?
Tonnage.
Yeah, thank you for the word tonnage. You can sit right there, but the word tonnage has been a great word for me today. I want to just give you kudos. The HCPS Health Committee-approved Mass Guidance Handout Graphic that was created was brilliant. And I say that because it's very straightforward, easy to understand, and it's easy to send out via email or on social media. The only question I raise is, well, thank you for creating that. Could we also have a similar guidance for quarantining protocols that answers some of the above-mentioned questions that would be just as easily communicated via social media or an image? Is that possible?
We can certainly work on that.
I don't want to put too much, but I just want to say that that, 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 that handout was awesome, and I just, as we have these nuanced questions in regard to.
Absolutely.
Regards to quarantining, anything we can to make it a kind of a one-stop.
I think we can do a little flow chart that would make it understandable.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you again for the marvelous work you all did.
My seeking the board's approval for the 2022 and 2023 school year calendars, I just want to reiterate again, this is not related to the school year we are ready to embark upon. This is looking ahead to the future. You, I know those watching, and certainly our board members know that we have brought forward recommendations a number of times, and we've been soliciting public feedback related to various calendars for your consideration, which include both a pre- and a post-Labor Day start. And so we have provided the board some last feedback we received related to that. Dr. Tiggen's going to provide a brief update and summary of where we've been and where we are, and then we'll be seeking the board's approval for establishing those calendars for the 2022-23 school year and the 2023-2024 school year.
As Dr. Cashwell said, I'm happy to be here again. Good afternoon, everyone, and do want to share the proposed 22, 23, and 23, 24 school calendars before asking, give you some additional information before asking for your approval. The 22, 23 pre- and post-Labor Day calendars, as well as the 23, 24 post-Labor Day calendars, as revised and shared at the August 12th School Board Meeting, have been posted to the HCPS website with that tonnage of information for the last two weeks. And we gathered additional feedback on the new calendar versions from August 12th through the 22nd, and we had 226 responses, of which 110 preferred the pre-Labor Day starts, and 111 preferred the post-Labor Day start, and five people who responded were undecided. When we broke down the data, again, this was not scientific, but just to give you some more data, more staff, 56.6% preferred the pre-Labor Day start, citing alignment with other school divisions and college and academic benefits, while more families, 52.6% preferred the post-Labor Day, citing because it didn't provide the disruptions to vacations and family time and worried about the heat. So let's look at next steps. As shared two weeks ago, the pre- and post-Labor Day calendar options presented on August 12th, which you see here, each provided the required 990 instructional hours and 191 teacher workdays. In addition, they include, they included key religious holidays and observations. And with a county as beautifully diverse as Henrico, the inclusion of the religious holidays and observances helps create a sense of belonging for our students and their families, as well as for our staff. The difference is that the earlier start date better supports student learning while aligning us with the school divisions within the region. Thus, the leadership team supports the work of the Calendar Committee and recommends the adoption of the pre-Labor Day calendars for 22, 23. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about the calendars or the survey.
Thank you again, Dr. Tiggen, for the presentation. Ms. Atkins?
Dr. Tiggen, what's interesting is it's a very tough decision in understanding information and data that's not scientific, and at the same time, 111 to 110. Do you feel like we have, as a division, exhausted all possibilities in getting feedback?
Yes, ma'am. We have, not only has it been this year, over previous years, and remember again, before school got out, we did, that Andy Jenks and his team helped us do, helped us to do a live event for our staff, and we've done them for additional ones for staff as well as for families. Those have been posted on the website, so that anyone who was not able to be a part of it was able to listen and, and, you know, review the questions and responses that were given. I do feel like over the last three years, when you take, take out the COVID year and a half, we've done a lot of work with our families, because we had taken the show out on the road to talk about, you know, pre-Labor Day and post-Labor Day, long before COVID started. And so I think our families are aware of the conversation and the merits that the Calendar Committee feels of the pre-Labor Day start.
Okay, thank you for your response, and I'll be interested in hearing my colleagues' thoughts as well. I think that in decision-making, we try to get as many facts as we can, and understanding that it's not scientific also tells another story. So I definitely am relying on expertise and trust from Dr. Cashwell and team to help guide and share as much as you can to help at least me do the best I can in representing the Rhine-Sainton and Highland Springs. So thank you so much for your response.
You're welcome.
Ms. Atkins, Mrs. Ogbon.
I've been on the board since 2014. This is the one issue that we've talked about every year. So I, part of me really thinks that some of the low response, if you want to call it that, to some of the surveys, and I'm, Dr. Cashwell and I talked about this, I think some people are like, okay, I've already talked about that last year, the year before, whatever. And I think we've talked about it for so long, it's a little bit of an old topic for some people. But we have, it's been on our legislative agenda to lobby the General Assembly to allow us to start for, before Labor Day for years. And there were lots of really good reasons, and I think, you know, most people are aware of those, and the most important, from my point of view, are academic, because that's what we are here, we're all about, is the academics for our students. And AP and IB and all of the special programs that our kids can participate in, national testing, all of those things are all aligned to a pre-Labor Day start for the rest of the country. And I think it's important to note that Chesterfield, Goochland, King &amp; Queen, Palatine, Prince George have already decided to go to a pre-Labor Day start, as has Maggie Walker and Code RVA. And I think it's important that we are aligned with our regional partners, but with other counties, especially when we have staff members who don't only live in Henrico. I think, you know, being the last county standing is not the place we want to be. So I would absolutely support a pre-Labor Day start. I may be in the minority, but I would rather us go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off, start, do two weeks, that's what Maggie Walker's doing, that's what Code RVA is doing. But if the rest of the board agrees with a one week, then a one week, I can support that. I just think we need to get started on it. But I would absolutely, pre-Labor Day for me, however anybody else feels, but there we go.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbon. Ms. Shea?
Thank you so much. I think when we look at our feedback from a data side, it's such a small sample size that mathematically, to extrapolate it and try to formulate definitely which way our whole division feels, that's, that's not relevant. What is relevant are those feedback pieces that we got about it to, to consider. But when, really, when I look at this, it comes down to a handful of things, including the academics that Ms. Ogbon talked about, but aligning with the rest of the region increases student opportunities and childcare solutions. Moving the school year back a little bit removes some of the barriers to high school extracurricular participation, increasing access for our students. And it also helps retain staff. You made an excellent point, Dr. Tiggen, that's if, if we are two weeks later than other divisions in the area, teachers who live in other counties, they are losing four weeks with their family, and that's significant. And when I look at what Ms. Bolden's team is doing, along with Dr. Cashwell and everyone, essentially trying to kick down every single door to find people to hire, taking a solution like this in order to retain staff, we need to do everything we can to retain staff. And I think that's something we've seen this, going into this fall. I have a lot of feedback that says, well, if you could just give the schools a couple more positions, you know, maybe they could do this with lunches or that with lunches or whatever. There aren't people. Like, we have tried to hire all the people we can for HVA, we're hiring people from all over the state. If they can just access a computer, we have looked at so many ways to recruit and retain people, and that is one of our greatest resources. So anyway, after that little diversion, I'm on board for a pre-Labor Day start.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Shea, Ms. Consella.
I appreciate all the, all the comments by my colleagues, and most important, most importantly is to the benefits for our students and families and staff. And I do disagree with the rip the Band-Aid off approach, respectfully, Mrs. Ogbon, but I do support a one, a phased-in approach of week by a week and then two weeks. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Dr. Cashwell, any insights you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think all great points have been raised, and, you know, we can certainly look at the feedback we receive from this go-round of soliciting feedback, but we've been getting feedback on this topic, and at times, we've had many more responses, but the trends have been the same. You see a split there that's pretty similar, whether it's been 100 responses or 500 responses or more. And so, you know, certainly understand that there are varying points of view here. The Calendar Committee want to thank them again for their due diligence and really thinking very deeply through all of the issues you all have raised, particularly related to student achievement, thinking of our families, staff considerations, the regional benefits when, you know, others have moved to that pre-Labor Day start. And I think the solution they've brought forward and for which I'm seeking your approval this evening really allows us to take a phased approach with that one week the first year and another week the second year. I know loud and clear the feedback that was pretty unanimous, no matter where folks stood, was if we're starting earlier, let's not go long, let's not go longer. And so I do think that that was accomplished with the draft the Calendar Committee, or the drafts the Calendar Committee have presented here, and the administration supports as well.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. That being said, board members, are there, is there a motion to approve the 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 school calendars?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the pre-Labor Day start of the 2022, 23, 23, 24 school calendars as presented.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mrs. Ogbon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, ayes have it, the calendars have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Tiggen, and please provide our thanks again to the Calendar Committee for their ongoing work. Mr. Chairman, I understand there is a public forum approximately 5 o'clock, so I do have several other items, but I'm willing to pause here if you'd like to take an opportunity to begin that item, or I defer to you.
I appreciate you deferring to me. I would prefer you to pause, and so that we can go to our public forum. Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. As stated by our superintendent, the next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the School Board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance. Speakers will be given two minutes to address the School Board. We will follow the sign-up list, and the board will not hear from speakers who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist you in tracking your time, there's a time-tracking system on a platform of the stage. Speakers will have two minute, a two-minute time limit. The light will be green as you begin your remarks. The yellow light means you have one minute remaining. And we ask that you And we ask that you please stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here today to hear from you, the community, and speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to you, but we do appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and we're so grateful to you for providing us with your impact, input. The first speaker is Ms. Lisa Thomas. Is Ms. Thomas here?
Yeah. So I'm not sure. My name's Lisa Thomas. I live in Chamberlain Farms subdivision. I'm not sure exactly what school is connected to that, but that's where I live. I'm here in total opposition to the model policies for treatment of transgender students in the Virginia public schools. Henrico County has a chance to make a moral, just, and constitutional choice by voting no against this highly politicized agenda that will have a negative effect on our children. According to the Williams Institute, a think tank of the University of California, there are approximately 4,150 transgender teenagers in Virginia. In the US Census last year, there are 1,792,458 children in the state of Virginia. That means that these stats are approximately 90%, 99% of the students are not transgender. Now, nobody really knows the exact stats because there are no, no, there's no data out there for that, but that's what these, these stats come with. So you're asking us to change the policy for 99% of the students to accommodate less than 1%. You know, I'm a recovering alcoholic and there is probably about 2% of us in the state of Virginia. And it would be absurd for me to ask the state of Virginia to stop serving alcohol, to shut down the ABC stores, to quit allowing vineyards to produce wine because of the small percentage of people that are alcoholics or in recovery. It's my job to learn how to live in society and that's what we need to be teaching our children. How do we live in society with people who are different or people that have issues? So, I just want to remind you that you guys work for us in, in this environment. You answer to us and I'm asking that you do not pass this policy in Virginia.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thomas. We do appreciate you. Phil McCracken. Phil McCracken. Salk Suk Mahidic. Ophelia McHawk. Eileen Dover. Eileen Dover. Don Kidick. Don Kidick. Wayne Kerr. Wayne Kerr. Tasha Tunstall. Tasha Tunstall. Melissa Dart. Melissa Dart. Aaron Sorkin. Aaron Sorkin. I want to thank you, Ms. Thomas, for your remarks, for being our only speaker. We appreciate your presence here today and your input. This concludes our public forum. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a number of policies that have been before the board a number of times for your review and that we are now seeking your approval. And then I also have some policies coming for your review for the first time, so we'll begin to tackle those. And certainly happy to take any questions you have about each before I seek your approval. But next, I am seeking the board's approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-18-001 student records. And this is in compliance with legislative changes that took effect July 1, 2021 for the 21 school year.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-18-001 student education records?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-18-006 disclosure of record data. And this is also a change related to legislative changes in complying with policy that goes into effect July 21 and affects this school year and, as requested at the August 12, 21 work session, the Policy Committee has worked to provide more succinct wording here for this policy.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-18-006 disclosure of record data?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy's been approved.
Thank you. Also, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-18-008 transfer of record data to a third, to a third party, also to comply with legislative changes.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-18-008 transfer of record data to a third party?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Also, seeking the board's approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-18-011 conditions and procedures for amending the content of the student's education record. Mr. Chair?
Before Ms. Ogborne speaks, yep. So I've been notified, been Mrs. Shea, she has a question, then Ms. Ogborne.
I do, I just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am. But hold on, let me recognize Vice Chair first.
Oh, sure.
Then I'll come recognize you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Cooper. I just wanted to publicly clarify, Dr. Cashwell, to help, help clarify for our public, some of these that we've already, we just passed, those are mostly about record-keeping, but this next one, I think, has, has brought the most questions. So I think there's a big misunderstanding about what we are actually adopting today. It is not the model VDOE policies. It is language that we have pushed into existing policies. So first of all, are these policies, the way they've been rewritten, are they a change from our current practices?
The policies, as brought forth by the Policy Committee and as we've discussed with the board and received input on, are reflective of current practices and do bring us in, in compliance with the law and legislative changes.
Also, do these policies usurp parental authority as written?
No, they don't. And I think you mentioned specifically the VDOE model policies and what you see here is not an adoption of that set of policies as they were worded there, but work that is, this represents the work of our Policy Committee and input we've received from our board related to how to proceed there.
Do these policies add anything to our curriculum in terms of?
Curriculum? No, none of these are related to the approved curriculum.
And then, lastly, these policies do not explicitly, correct me if I'm wrong, these policies do not explicitly talk about the use of restrooms?
No.
And so the use of restrooms is in, to our legal counsel, is in reflection to the Grimm case of the application of Title IX federal law. Correct? I couldn't hear you. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, but we did add into the, this policy we're about to talk, talk about that students may work individually with their school. So if there is a student, any student, who is uncomfortable using a restroom for any reason, what would be the procedure for, to be able to have access to perhaps a single-stall restroom?
I think the student or the parent should seek the advice of a trusted adult. It might be the teacher, administrator, school counselor, but absolutely working with the school.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mrs. Ogborne.
This specifically, I wanted just to get out there, I've had a couple of parents reach out that were concerned with, again, like Mrs. Shea just mentioned, procedure, because we're not putting this in this next policy. That, for example, what would a parent do if the parent and the child did not agree on, let's say, for example, the name that the child was called at school or something like that? So my answer to that parent is what we have in other policies that we're talking about today, is this would be worked out at school. And we have a sentence in one of these policies that our staff and students will work with parents and students to come out to meet the best needs of the kids. And I just want to clarify publicly that that's what we're telling people to do and that we're not putting in policy-specific procedures, you must do this and you must do that. Correct?
I think that's accurate.
That's correct.
Yes.
Right.
I mean, I think that the policies do guide and provide overarching guidance for our administrators on what the expectations are of the school division.
But they can, they have some, the latitude to, to work with parents and students to come up and to meet their needs.
As long as we're following the law, yes.
Right, absolutely. But the other question I had from parents was how to, how are we going to train our teachers and our staff in these changes and this flexibility? Because I had a parent who called concerned because the guidance counselor at their school was not aware of these possible changes and some of them affect this family. And so they were like, how are we going to, now that we have made some policy changes, how do we make staff aware of those for this upcoming school year and parents as well?
Well, I will just add that the policies you see here are not a departure of current practice.
Right.
But we also understand that we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to make sure our school administrators, registrars, school counselors, our teachers are all very aware of the policies and procedures. So certainly, providing yearly updates is very common by our central team, to our principals and from our principals to our teachers and staff. But your, your comment related to school counseling specific is one I've taken note of and will make sure that we emphasize any changes that would come forward today.
Well, and, and I have also advised that parent that that is something they can work with the staff and the principal to make sure that, again, this is one of those, we handle things personally. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea and Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Consella, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just appreciate both of my colleagues clarifying exactly what this is and exactly what our policies are not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Atkins, anything you want to add or say?
No, I'm looking forward to moving on.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P6-18-011 conditions and procedures for amending content of the student's education record?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy's been approved.
Thank you. Also, seeking the board's approval of proposed revisions to policy P7-14-001 authorization responsibility.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to policy P7-14-001 extracurricular activities and school programs?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Also, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P11-10-001 community partnerships.
Is there a motion to approve proposed revisions to the community partnerships?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I have a number of policies bringing forth for your review. Happy to take any questions you have and wouldn't be seeking your approval on these until the next meeting. So the policy P4-09-004 salary checks and deductions has some changes made here to align with current practice.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Madam Superintendent?
Okay. Also, providing for your review, proposed revisions to policy P6-02-004 recording of attendance. And again, these changes reflect updates and wording to provide consistency and clarity.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Some revisions are being proposed to policy P10-10 dissemination of information in order to bring this policy up to date with current practice.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
All right. There are a number of policies recommended for retirement and that is P6-20-004 fines and P6-20-005 deposits for the use of laboratory or library equipment sales. And that, again, aligns with our current practices and these policies are no longer relevant.
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Okay. And then there are a number of policies that are actually unchanged for which I'll be seeking your approval at the next meeting. And those are listed within Board Docs under Item 6.14. There's three of them. P6-03-009, P7-03-03, and P7-04-017, all of which are unchanged but would be re-adopted at the next meeting based on your approval.
I, Superintendent, I have a question about the report of non-enrolled students. So from working at a school, I understand if a student doesn't come for five days after opening school, they are unenrolled from that school, which happens frequently with students who moved and didn't update us. However, now that we are in the time of COVID, if a student is quarant, happens to be quarantining over the beginning of school, will they still be unenrolled?
They would notify the school and then that would be considered an absence. So they wouldn't be a no-show or a non-report, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Can they, can they be absent before they attend?
They can't be absent.
Until they attend.
But we can, you know.
Retro.
Prevent them from going, having to go through the whole re-enrollment process. We would just alter their first day of school for the year.
Great, thank you. That's it.
Anyone else have questions, comments?
All right. And the last item, positive update, and you've heard so many policies coming before. You want to thank our Policy Committee, our Board members who serve on the Policy Committee for their tireless work. Thank you, Mrs. Consella and Mrs. Ogborne for your work. Part of that effort has been to migrate our policy and regulations manual to Board Docs, again, making these policies much more accessible to the public, searchable in the features and that this platform allows is a large step forward, has a search feature, as I said, and allows individuals to locate information with greater accuracy and ease. So I am asking that the board approve the migration of our policies and regulations manual into Board Docs.
Awesome innovation. Board members, is there a motion to approve the migration of the policies and regulations manual to Board Docs?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Consella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the migration has been approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If you, if you don't mind, I'm just going to give a shout-out to Ms. Sherri Gumpel. The amount of work that Ms. Gumpel has done to make this process of migration possible, it is gargantuan amount of work. And she's been working on this for quite a long time. And I just wanted to thank her for her work and her due diligence. It is incredible what she has had to go through to get this done. So.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. We do agree with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Lots of effort and energy has gone into this, so appreciate those kudos and we'll be sure to pass those to her. Next item is I am seeking your approval of the revisions which you, were presented at our last meeting and we discussed and took questions on related to revisions to update our student code of conduct as we do each year to be accurate for the 2021, 2022 school year. So seeking your approval there.
Any questions from anybody pertaining to our code of conduct, student conduct? All right. Is there a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 code of student conduct?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. All in favor, say aye. Seconded by Ms. Ogbon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the code of student conduct has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I am recommending that the school board accept the Jobs for Virginia Graduates Grant Award funding of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to accept the Jobs for Virginia Graduates Grant Award?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Consella, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the grant has been accepted.
Thank you. For the next item, I am going to be seeking the board's approval of our amended spending plan for our CRRS A-SER III Grant Award, which is just over $78 million and has been allocated to Henrico County Public Schools. Mr. Wax is going to provide an overview, but before he does, and before I seek your approval, just to remind us of where we are and where we've been, and would just reiterate to the board that, you know, you'll recall that we've provided an initial draft, that we sought public input on, and certainly have then brought to you yet another amendment related to some changes we've made. Certainly, we heard some public feedback that was in strong alignment with our strategic plan goals, and so that provided an opportunity for us to lean in there and make some amendments. So Mr. Wax is going to share that information with you, and then look forward to seeking your approval.
Good afternoon, school board members and Dr. Cashwell. Again, we have a brief presentation on our $78.3 million Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or SER III Federal Grant Award. As Dr. Cashwell noted, we are now seeking approval of the spending plan, which took into account stakeholder input and follows the submission of 71 written comments and the holding of a public hearing on August 12th. You'll see in the presentation, we've made some amendments to the initial proposal based on input from the public and stakeholders, and in alignment with our strategic plan. The application for this three-year spending plan must be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by September 1st. Just looking back at our, all of our SER awards, we initially received $9.45 million in our SER I allocation, which can be spent through September of '22. We received about $34.87 million in our SER II Grant Award, that was approved by the school board in April, and those funds were appropriated by the Board of Supervisors in June. At our last meeting on August 12th, the school board accepted our $987,000 SER II set aside award. And today, we're focused on the $78.3 million SER III spending plan, and those funds can be spent through September of 2024. Looking back at some of the initiatives that we have previously funded in our SER I and SER II grants, we have purchased cleaning supplies, air filters, and personal protective equipment. We bought Chromebooks, hotspots for students, and expanded bandwidth. We've added permanent substitute teachers, classroom monitors, and clinic attendance. We've hired new full-time reading specialists, counselors, and library assistants. We've purchased instructional materials and library books lost during the pandemic. We've bought new buses and minivans, and we funded a number of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning projects, as well as security vestibules. Looking at some of the initiatives previously funded in approved budgets that align with our equity, diversity, and opportunity efforts, we've added positions to focus on English as a second language, family engagement, culturally responsive learning, and policy and constituency services. We prioritized resources for small group reading instruction in classroom libraries. We've reduced reliance on part-time instructional assistance by adding full-time positions, and that was one of the recommendations from the September 2018 Holton Report. We've included support for communities and schools, and we've established 21st Century Community Learning Centers at three elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. We've also funded a new Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Holiday Elementary. We've eliminated fees for the PSAT for ninth and 10th graders. We've eliminated laptop information access, physical education, and science fees for all students, and those were related to our core programs. We've added school-level funding for materials and supplies, and last fiscal year, we used savings to write off outstanding student fee debt that had accumulated during the pandemic. As we have previously highlighted, Attachment D of Superintendent's Memo 11021 does specifically list the following in terms of allowable uses for SER III funds. At least 20% of our award must be reserved to address learning loss among students. We can provide mental health services and supports, including through the implementation of full-service community schools. We can implement summer learning and supplement after-school programs, and repair and/or improve facilities to reduce the risk of transmitting the virus and support student health. Now, walking through our SER III spending plan, we're including $4.5 million to provide a third year of funding for 58 positions that were initially funded for two years in our SER II Grant Award. This will allow additional time for the local economy to recover from the pandemic before we seek to add them to our base budget. These include 15 reading specialists, 30 school counselors, and 13 elementary library assistants. We're also including about $633,000 for eight positions for our new Henrico Virtual Academy, including a psychologist and a social worker, two teachers, an innovative learning coach, two attendance officers, and an office assistant. Following public comment and stakeholder input, and consistent with multiple strategic plan goals, as an amendment to our initial spending plan, we are asking the school board to include about $1 million to cover three years of personnel costs for a talent acquisition ambassador in the Human Resources Department to oversee recruitment and retention of a qualified, diverse workforce, which has become even more challenging during COVID-19. We're also adding two social workers, and these positions were most frequently highlighted among our written public comments as an additional social-emotional need stemming from the pandemic. Turning to infrastructure, the largest allocation of our SER III plan is $49.9 million for the design, construction, and furniture fixtures and equipment at the campus of Virginia Randolph. This project is listed as a need, but without a funding source in fiscal year 2023 of the county's approved capital improvement program. The project will increase community-based services for students and their families through a new community learning center hub. In particular, it will expand capacity for such high-demand programs as alternative ed and exceptional education in a centrally located campus, where the social distancing requirements associated with the pandemic have made instruction all the more challenging. And finally, completion of this project would address Recommendation 1B of the Equity and Special Education Report from September 2018 that was requested by the superintendent and the county manager, and has been commonly referred to as the Holton Report. The plan also includes about $482,000 for improvements at the former Highland Springs High School building, including a network refresh and a phone system upgrade, paint, carpet, a new set of bathrooms, and program divider doors. And this project also will increase community-based services for students and their families through a new community learning center hub. Shifting to some of our operating costs, the plan includes $275,000 for repair and support of our One Electronic Device Per Student Initiative, $46,000 in startup cost for the Virtual Academy, $120,000 to purchase and retrofit three community engagement vans to replace Big Blue, and $100,000 for outreach support and student and parent re-engagement. Finally, our plan also includes $14.6 million for three years of intensive tutoring remediation, or approximately $4.2 million per year, as our needs are assessed and revisited, $3.2 million for two more years of expanded summer school remediation, as the respective 2021 summer academy costs were being covered by SER II, and an additional $5.42 million to provide one to two more years of pre-K through 12 literacy program materials and other intervention and instructional resources, which were initially funded through SER II. We should note that the allowance for Virginia Randolph Project was reduced by $10.6 million to allow for more tutoring remediation, and fiscal year 2024 instructional resources were reduced by about $1 million to cover the additional costs of the talent acquisition ambassador and the two social workers. So in conclusion, I just want to walk through the, our timeline. On April 30th, we received our initial confirmation of how much the school division received and the application requirements for the Virginia Department of Education. The school board received an overview presentation for SER III on June 24th, and on June 30th, we posted our initial draft spending plan on our website. At the last school board meeting on August 12th, we held a public hearing, and tonight we're seeking your approval and your acceptance of the SER III Grant Award. As I previously mentioned, we must submit our application to the Virginia Department of Education by September 1st, and subsequently, we will be seeking the introduction of a budget amendment at one Board of Supervisors meeting, and then a public hearing would be required at a subsequent meeting in order to consider it due to the magnitude of the amendment. And that concludes my brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, just want to first make sure I acknowledge Mr. Wax's heroic effort on this. The timeline is no longer on the screen, but in case you don't know, that's pretty aggressive in budget timeline speak, especially when you're dealing with a process like this. The turnaround time was incredibly tight, and he and the entire leadership team and their staff worked so hard on the proposal, making sure that we were continuing to think proactively about being responsive to our COVID response for students, both in the academic, social, emotional, and infrastructure arenas. So as you know, the initial proposal we put forth and sought comment on was based on some rough estimates at the time. We've continued to refine those numbers, and that's why you've seen some changes. And while you've seen some numbers go up and some numbers go down, I want to emphasize that that's not based on one taking precedent as more important than another. These projects that are here are priorities, and they're important, and the adjustments are simply based on newer estimates, as we've been able to dig into those numbers a little deeper and think about the big picture. And so, you know, certainly, as Mr. Wax showed, we, the last draft we brought to you did not include those two social workers, which we've added since, and the position for Human Resources related to talent acquisition. And so, you know, certainly, the social-emotional pieces are something, you know, we're committed to as a school division, and we heard that loud and clear from our public feedback. And so we were able to lean into this plan and make those additions, and then also hearing very much from our community, both in the written and in-person comments, related to the importance of hiring a diverse workforce that mirrors the demographics of our students. That's also one of our strategic goals, so a strong alignment there, and really being able to leverage this grant to bring on, you know, certainly, our staffing and hiring challenges have been highlighted all throughout the evening here, when we were talking about bus drivers and teachers and some of the challenges. Certainly, the pandemic has worsened some of those for us, and so this is an important step forward in helping us reach that goal and prioritize it. So I just want to thank him for all of that work and amendments and responsiveness and what was really a tight timeline there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that insightful insertion, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Atkins?
So, Mr. Wax, thank you and your team for all of your hard work. That's certainly an aggressive timeline. I'm also grateful to the entire staff for listening, listening to some of the town halls. I had one myself, receiving input in written format, verbal format, email format possibly, and even over the phone. It is important that we listen, and I'm delighted that we are going to adhere to some of the recommendations in the Holton Report, particularly around Virginia Randolph v. rec. It's important, and we have an opportunity to do some amazing things in that space. I'm also delighted to see funding towards the CLC at the old Highland Springs High School. We need it, so delighted to see that, as well as, again, just listening, understanding that social-emotional supports, they were necessary before COVID, and they're even more necessary now, and we have the opportunity to continue to try to reach as many children and families, including staff. And so I'm very fond of the spending plan. Dr. Cashwell, I will ask you to go into a deeper dive on what the new role that was listed on the screen. I don't remember the exact title, so I don't want to say it and be incorrect, but I'd like for you to talk a little bit more about that talent acquisition ambassador and how it aligns to equity and opportunity within our schools.
Happy to do so, and would invite Mrs. Bolden, if I miss any key points from the Human Resources perspective, to add to it. You've got the title just right, and Human Resources has proposed the title of Talent Acquisition Ambassador. You know that our, we strive to recruit and retain a talented workforce on behalf of our students in every arena, whether it's in the classroom or some of our support services. And so we want to make sure that our workforce is diverse and represents the demographics of our student body. That's a challenge for us, but one we're committed to and one that has been ongoing. And so, you know, we certainly want to make sure we're putting the effort, energy, and time into employing any strategy we can, being creative in our recruitment efforts, to make sure we're very focused on hiring a diverse work staff. Do you want to add anything to that, Mrs. Bolden?
Ma'am, I think you've covered that.
Thank you. That's all for my comments.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogbon?
Just real quick, if I could have a little more information on the pre-K literacy materials, I think we've dedicated $5.42 million. I am a big fan of putting materials in the hands of teachers, and I'm just really curious how that's going to be, because it says instructional resources, what those are, and where that will be distributed.
So, great question, and this is one of those items that we actually funded through SER I, SER II, and are going to continue to fund through SER III. So a lot of the resources that we wanted to acquire, we wanted to be able to renew them and keep them up throughout 2024, which is when SER III expands. So these are the same materials we shared information with you before, additional materials, but specific information, I don't know if someone can speak to the pre-K material, or if that's something we'll have to get back to. I'm looking out in the, okay. She was seated, she was seated just behind John, so I really couldn't see her there, and I wasn't certain she was coming forward.
Yes, so I don't have much more to add, and what Dr. Cashwell has already shared. However, as you know, over the years we've presented to you, that it's very important to us that we have a systemic literacy program in place, and that every school, no matter where you are in Henrico County, has the resources that you need to be able to teach literacy. And that's been very important to us. And as we've looked at what materials you need to supplement the curriculum, and also what schools currently have, we've been out and doing needs assessments to say, oh, this school has this many F and B kids, this school has this many books in their library. So some of this money will be used to continue to fill in those gaps and level the playing field. Some of the money will be spent to continue to add resources to help teachers build their craft. And then, as Dr. Cashwell said, some of the money will just be used to continue what we've already purchased in place, until we can put that in our local budget.
Because supporting it once we have it in place is so important.
Absolutely.
Because once teachers use up those materials, if they are usable materials, and they're not, you know, it's not books, it's things that you, workbooks, whatever it is, that the kids use up, we need to replace them, because one of the worst things we can do is leave teachers with half of what they need. So I'm really glad to hear that, that, and of course, we want all of our schools to have the same materials and access to them. That's so important. So I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogbon. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. So like we've mentioned, this has been an aggressive timeline developing this. I know we have to essentially approve something tonight so that we could send it to the state by September 1st. So once this is submitted, how concrete is it, or are we able to file amendments if other needs arise? I mean, because this is really over the next three years that we have need for.
I think he can add to, very flexible, like all of our federal grants, in that we would be asking the VDOE to approve that the categories we've listed here are allowable uses of these federal funds. And you know that, as Mr. Wax showed, there were very specific uses for SER III, and so we'd be seeking the VDOE's approval of that and the general ballpark figures we've provided. But if we find that something's costing more or less, or we need to adjust or amend, we certainly have the opportunity to do that throughout the process.
Yes, so this is a grant application that we would submit to, the state system called Omega, where we would subsequently could make amendments, but it is through September of 2024. We also specifically submitted the Virginia Randolph Project for prior approval and did hear back some positive things on that.
Great, thank you. I just, I know, you know, as whenever Dr. Cashwell calls me, you know, I think we have a solution, you know, and, you know, for COVID-related things, often they come with a big price tag, and I'm thinking, oh, how are we going to find that in the budget? And it's like, oh, we can use SER funds, which is great. These have really helped fill those gaps, but I'm thinking, as we have another three years, you know, there are likely things that we can't anticipate. So I want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible in having enough flexibility to meet needs that wouldn't then, unforeseen needs wouldn't then have to pull out of the general fund. And then, you know, as a school board, it's really incumbent on us to use these funds specifically as a response. specifically as a response to COVID. That is what they are intended for. So, Dr. Cashwell and/or Mr. Wax, can you share how explicitly how utilize or how the Virginia Randolph Project is a response to COVID needs?
Well, absolutely. I'm happy to do that, and he just pulled that back up on the screen, so that'll make it a little easier for us to just tick off some of the things he's already mentioned. But one of the things he talked about in his presentation was simply the physical amount of space with distancing, the HVAC, the age and condition of the building. So, being able to do some of those health and safety upgrades there is really a challenge based on the condition and age of the facility. And so, this would allow us, from that standpoint, to bring it up to date. But then, when we think of it on the programmatic side, there are a host of other reasons. So, this is a campus that houses programs for special education for students who may have significant needs and need a specialized environment, also secondary students who need an alternative setting, smaller classrooms, any other host of supports, and we know what a great job they do providing those, but right now, they can only take a limited number of students. And so, what this project proposal does, by making some of the facility improvements, it allows us to add more seats. And so, pre-pandemic, we did not have an alternative middle school program. We had tremendous need. This allows us to add a middle school program, to add seats at the secondary level, to add more seats for our special education students, and sometimes, these are our youngest students, many of whom may have the most significant need and not been in classrooms where, you know, 18 months or longer gaps are forming. So, we want to make sure that we have space to meet the needs of students who may need a different setting. And so, I think this campus has shown us that they, you know, have some real creative and very effective programming. We'd like to be able to offer that to more students, and we absolutely see that as a COVID response. We know that the number of students who may now not be on track to graduate or need these kinds of services would be served here. An additional layer, one of the explicit uses for SER-3 is around community learning centers, and that's specifically because of the wraparounds they provide the school community for mental health and actual health supports. You heard about Glenn Lee and the testing and that kind of thing. Glenn Lee is a CLC site. We've been working to build our hub-and-spoke model across Henrico County, and you know that Highland Springs High School will have our first hub. The second site we had identified was the campus of Virginia Randolph. So, this allows us a head start on getting that community learning center hub up and running there, which would provide invaluable resources, not just to the students who attend there, but to the Brooklyn and Fairfield districts respectively. Things like mental health supports onsite, expanded recreational opportunities, adult education opportunities, and really, we'd be tailoring those programs, just as we're doing with the Highland Springs model, to meet the needs of the community. It might be English language learning support, any number of services that truly benefit our families, and particularly post-COVID, so.
Well, we certainly, in terms of community learning center, we certainly all support additional access to mental health, and it sounds like that would benefit not only students at that school, but the whole community's bridging it. Just to allude back to what you were saying about expanding seats for alternative education opportunities, do we anticipate, as a result of COVID, having more students who need that environment to benefit?
Absolutely. We learned a lot during COVID about students who might thrive or excel in the virtual environment. We learned a lot about students who, we know how important it is for them to have those smaller class sizes, perhaps different experiential learning, students with specialized needs who have, you know, sensory needs that need to be met in a certain environment. And so, we want to be able to create. This campus would allow us to really do those programs well and expand access to them.
Thank you, Ms. Shade. Ms. Cancelo?
Yes, I'm very excited by the needs being addressed with the SER-3 funding. My only question at this point, since I think this is our third meeting talking SER-3, second or third meeting talking about SER-3, I don't know, is there any reserve perhaps for unexpected, unanticipated needs, or is there any wiggle room within this funding to change it, Mr. Wax?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily describe it as a reserve, because we have programmed all the dollars. We do anticipate some flexibility as we assess needs. Again, it's a three-year plan, don't necessarily expect spending the same amount in each of those three years, and as we've discussed, we do anticipate having the flexibility to go ahead and amend our grant application with the Virginia Department of Education as our assessments change, and if something becomes a higher priority as the pandemic continues, certainly.
Okay, I just wanted to truly understand the flexibility as we go forward. If we're a year out and we're like, oh, no, what does that flexibility look like?
Yes, absolutely. And like, for example, you saw a dollar figure listed for tutoring and remediation. Well, there are lots of ways we can tackle tutoring and remediation, both during the day, outside of the school day, targeted programs, for example, for, you know, ELL students, or whatever it might be that allows us the wiggle room to take that $14.6 million, perhaps in, you know, again, that's over three years. Rather than taking that dollar amount and dividing evenly over three years, we might use much more in the first year of SER-3, or a little less the second, and we can be flexible about how we do that. Perhaps we find that summer school isn't as costly as we imagined, and we can, you know, shift those funds. So, absolutely, I think you see, you know, assuming our plan is approved by the VDOE, then we know these are approved uses, and then as we make expenditures that fall into these categories, we're able to have some flexibility there. And then, of course, you know, many of these things, we have some funding, not to this degree, in our local budget and in our operation, so.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Dr. Cashwell, just quickly for me, thank you, Ms. Shade, for asking that question, and for you for giving a very exhaustive answer as far as, and I don't mean that to be funny, I mean that to be very serious, because, you know, persons look at the fact that Virginia Randolph is the most, you know, absorbent of the SER-3, and they ask the validity of that and the necessity of that. And Mickey knows, I've been advocating for a new Virginia Randolph campus for the last six years, and others on the board have as well, and this is not an attempt for us just to take this money and just build this school. It's bigger than that, and I appreciate you giving that exhaustive example of the rationale. And I am hoping with fingers crossed that VDOE will approve this so that we can provide this space for our community, for that staff, our staff, our students, because it would definitely be a welcome addition to us being very judicious in our desire to address the recommendations that the September 2018 Holton Report on Equity and Special Education came out with. So, kudos to you all and for creatively applying this, and hopefully, again, we will get approval from VDOE. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
All right, so, hearing no more questions or clarification needed, I am seeking the board's approval of this federal grant application.
Board members, is there a motion to accept the SER-3 funding?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the contract has been accepted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The switch page is here, sorry about that. All right, next item, I am recommending that the school board award a contract to Quinn Evans Architects Incorporated in the amount of $3,414,164 for the architectural and engineering services associated with the design and renovation and expansion of the ACE Center at Hermitage High School and the renovation of the ACE Center at Highland Springs High School. I also recommend that the school board authorize the superintendent execute a contract for this project in a form approved by the county attorney.
Can I take chairman prerogative and not allow Ms. Cancelo or Ms. Atkins to first and second it, because I think they're going to fight over who's going to first and second. So, we all decide real quick, who's going first and second? Okay, is there a motion to accept the contract?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second to accept the contract?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Cancelo. All in favor, say aye.
Yes!
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the contract has been accepted.
Thank you so much. Lots of smiles and excitement behind Matt, I even see Matt Baton back there nodding his head. I think he approves of your approval of that. All right, next, I am recommending the school board review and approve five solar, well, you've had the chance to review them now, I'd like you to approve the five solar power purchase agreements associated with lease agreements and related documents with Sun Tribe Solar LLC for the installation of solar power systems at Colonial Trail, Harvey, and Cackley Elementary Schools, Holman Middle School, and Glen Allen High School, and recommending that you authorize me to execute a contract for this project in a form approved by the county attorney.
Can we accept a motion to do whatever she just said? No, I'm sorry.
Solar panel contract.
Is there a motion to accept agreements?
Yes, so moved.
Been moved by vice chair, Ms. Shade. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogden. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the agreements have been approved.
All right, and thank you so much, and another, what you were, I think, calling exhaustive explanation here, so pardon the lengthiness, but I am recommending that the school board award a construction contract to RMT Construction and Development Group LLC in the amount of $159,169 for the door and hardware replacement project at Rolfe Middle School. I also recommend that you authorize me to execute a contract in a form approved by the county attorney and to execute change orders within the scope of the project budget, which would not exceed 15% of the original amount.
Is there a motion to accept the contract?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the contract has been approved.
All right, next, the next items are consent items, and so they can be taken in a block, and I am requesting approval of the following: the acceptance of monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending June 31, 2021, acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the month ending June 31, 2021, and the approval of personnel items.
Is there a motion to accept the consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mrs. Shade to approve the following consent items, and been seconded by Ms. Cancelo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the following consent items have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. That concludes items from me.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Seeing as how we did have our public forum at 5:00 p.m., as stated, we will move past item 11 dot 01 to item 12 dot 01, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June 8, 2021 school board governance meeting and June 24, 2021 work session?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. I look to my left, is there any? To my right, all right, no unfinished business. Under new business, the first item is approval of school board meeting dates for the 2022's calendar year. Is there a second? I'm sorry, is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Ogden. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same right, the ayes have it, the meeting dates have been approved. Ms. Atkins, do you have any new business? Mrs. Ogden?
No.
You, Mrs. Shade, Mrs. Cancelo? All right. Yep, it's okay. Okay, yes, ma'am.
We're a mess on the side.
I'm sorry. Ms. Cancelo?
Sorry, I just wanted to, details are not yet finalized, but on September 29, I'm going to be hosting a community check-in in the Brooklyn District.
Thank you for doing that, because that was going to be in my next statement about announcements, and I know Ms. Atkins probably quickly wanted to say something about her event, and then we'll let Ms. Ogden say something about her upcoming event, and I'll say something about my event. Ms. Atkins?
So, I want to first thank all the staff, the exceptional communications team, just grateful for your support. It was a wonderful town hall. It spoke to the many concerns and challenges that many families are facing. It also spoke to some of the great things that are ahead of us. So, very quickly, just want to say two words, and that's thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogden?
Just a quick one, Mr. Brandon and I will be having a virtual community forum next Wednesday, September 1st, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, and Mr. Janks and his wonderful team and Ms. Gyllenhaan have done a great job of advertising that for us and getting it out to the public and sending an email to every person in the Three Chop District that we're having this, so I hope people will come. We have several principals that will be joining us and staff members, so it'll be a time for questions, concerns, and what anybody wants to talk about, so we look forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. Again, I want to thank Dr. Cashwell, first and foremost, and her staff for willingly, I know a lot was on your plates to help me to have our Fairfield District Town Hall meeting as well. Thank you for the information that was disseminated. Thank you for the questions that were answered, and thank you for the presentations that were provided. And to the community, thank you for tuning in live and as well as in person. Can't say enough about our media relations team for broadcasting it, for making sure everything was taken care of, Sean and Andy and the whole team, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. Yes, ma'am, Shade?
And not to be left out, the Tuckahoe District, we will do something once we get school rolling with our other events. The nice thing about virtuals, we can tune into other districts, but as to not overlap too much, we'll get going once school gets going.
Thank you, Ms. Shade. I think all five of us have shown a dedication to our communities and a willingness to be a part of them, so thank you all. So, next item is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, September 9, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. in the New Bridge Learning Center Auditorium. The meeting time may be adjusted if needed, and this is the last thing on the agenda. The meeting is adjourned.